So I see three hands up. Mr. Poghosian. Yes, your liquor license is on this agenda, so you will be heard shortly. So that, I see you typed a question in the chat. If you have a question, put it in the chat and I'll be able to answer it. Let me know when everybody is ready.
Hey Dave.
Hey Bob, how are you?
How are yourself? When you get a chance.
Are we ready, Dave?
As long as everybody else is ready.
Joe?
Yeah, we're all set on this side. You're good. Just waiting for Councilman Messier and Councilwoman Williamson to come back on, I believe.
They're on.
Okay, they're on now, all set.
All right, meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, October 20th. It is now 7:38 PM. Town council meeting via Zoom.
Councilman Luchardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
I'm here, here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Yeah.
Council President Goslin?
Yeah.
There is a quorum. Discussion, action.
Before we get started, hold on one second. Councilman Luchardi?
Under Section 42-46-4 and 42-46-5 A1 of Rhode Island general laws, the town council will close the executive session till tonight, October 20th, to discuss litigation update, Kelsey versus Wes Warwick slash Cola, and the interim town manager discussion, discussion slash appointment.
Second.
Roll call, any comment? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilman Luchardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Discussion regarding actions and planning pertaining to addressing COVID-19 virus and the impact on town operations. One, discussion and ratification of the Executive Order 20, of Executive Order 2020-12 of the Acting Town Manager amending Executive Order 2020-1, a declaration of state of emergency dated October 20th, 2020, to extend the state of emergency in the town of West Warwick until November 20th, 2020, sponsored by the Acting Town Manager.
Colonel Ma?
Good evening. Three points regarding the COVID update. First, based on the governor's extension of her executive orders through November 19th, I prepared a supplemental emergency declaration to continue in West Warwick through the November 10th meeting. Secondly, we continue to do what we need to do to protect our employees with decontamination efforts and PPEs throughout the town for our employees. And thirdly, Chief Verone has established a reopening plan for the town hall, which has been partially open this week for emergency voting and opened by appointments at a few other locations. So we'll continue to monitor the status of COVID in Rhode Island and try to make appropriate decisions based upon that with gradual reopening.
Any questions for the Colonel?
No. Do we have a concern that the agenda item actually says until November 20th? Even though the attachment does say the 10th?
Can amend it.
Amend it as a typo.
It's a typo. So we would move, I'd move approval of the Executive Order 2020-12 as amended.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
So I was gonna say October, November 10th, not 20th.
Correct.
Discussion, action, vote of town council. Any matter on this portion of the agenda may be acted upon by way of topic discussion and action by the town council with a vote on the record to approve, amend, deny, or table the agenda item. One, presentation. Environmentalist Christopher Solar, 5G Concerns, sponsored by Council Vice President D'Amico.
So. I'm sorry, am I up?
Yeah, Councilman D'Amico?
Okay, I thought it was further down. So I just wanted to refresh the council's memory before Mr. Solar gives his presentation. If you guys remember back in July, he reached out to the council. He is a West Warwick resident. And he did have some concerns regarding electromagnetic fields and the adverse effects that they might have as far as the emissions from cell phone towers and, you know, how it could affect the migration of birds, biological effects, things to that effect. So I met with Mr. Solar and we've been putting this off for quite some time. We did, we were hoping that this would be a live presentation, but obviously things haven't changed that much. So Mr. Solar put together a, you know, like a digital presentation that he's going to share with us this evening.
Are you, Chris, are you able to share screen? Thank you.
John is sharing the presentation.
Thank you.
Everyone hear me?
Yep.
Thank you to the council for giving me some time to bring attention to this issue. So. I'm just gonna speak on the 4G, 5G environmental health effects and surveillance issues. Next slide. Oh, back one. So my background, I have degrees in geology. I spent five years in environmental consulting and two public health internships. I performed environmental investigations across Southern New England and I currently work on an organic farm and as an independent environmental researcher. Next slide. So the 5G rollout, this is the next generation of wireless facilities for cellular communication. So the 3G, 4G are on the big towers that we've seen. And this next generation, the telecom companies are placing the antennas directly on telephone poles, as you can see. These are two pictures from Providence. So it's already being rolled out in Providence and Central Falls and around that metro area, the urban area right there. So basically, there's two types of antenna. One is more cylindrical shaped on the left and the other is this three-phase shape on the right. And the 5G will actually piggyback on the 4G network. So they're putting 4G antennas on the telephone poles too. And so the upside is faster download speeds, the Internet of Things, connecting things to, everything to the Internet, but there are significant downsides, as I'll get into. Next slide. So the issue is wireless radiation exposure to homes. The 5G network will require antennas every five to 10 houses. So it's much denser than the 3G, 4G network. And this will put the antennas right in the immediate vicinity of the second and third floors of homes. And this is a picture of 5G antenna in Providence. Next slide. In 2017, Rhode Island passed the Small Cell Sighting Act. And this act makes it difficult for communities or residents to oppose the sighting of these 5G antennas right outside their homes or businesses. A direct quote in the law is, "Small cells shall not be subject to zoning review or approval." To me, that's a red flag. If these things were perfectly environmentally safe and healthy, why, why remove the power of municipalities to have a little say in like, maybe they'll go on this road and not on this road, like go in the industrial area, not in the neighborhood. Next slide. So a little background on electromagnetic radiation. It's basically natural versus the industrial ones. So we've evolved over a long time to be in natural balance with electromagnetic radiation from the sun, UV, visible infrared light, and from the earth, the Schumann resonances. And for example, more melanin in your skin to protect against skin cancer if you're in, you're in the, oh, you live in the tropics. So it's a natural evolution. The problem with industrial EMR is it's very recent, biologically speaking, only 120 years ago. These things, the electrification of earth. So you have power lines, radar, and now 3G, 4G, and even 5G. An increasing amount of industrial EMR has been superimposed upon natural background levels. And if you look on the graph on the right, the top axis is the power flux density of the signal in watts per square meter. And the bottom axis is frequency of the signal. So you have Wi-Fi over here on the right and lower frequency like FM, VHF radio is over here. So in the 50s, there wasn't much going on, just radar. And by the 1980s, it's really starting to increase with the introduction of the first cell phones. And then in the 2000s, it just took off with Wi-Fi, smartphones. And now we're gonna add on 5G to that. And this is a logarithmic scale on the left. So these lines up here are the current UN radiation limits. So people would say, oh, no problem, or we're still below all those. But the issue is that many health scientists and doctors think these limits are way too high as they only address thermal, thermal effects and not non-thermal. And because of that, media and governments tend to dismiss or downplay the environmental health effects. Next slide. So my thinking, why this is so not talked about in the media or just such a controversial topic is, what was the focus of our high school biology course on? The focus wasn't almost entirely on biochemistry, like cellular reactions, what chemicals are in your cells. So something's missing, like biophysics, the role of electromagnetism. And a doctor, Dr. Robert O. Becker, MD, among others, began investigating electric currents and fields in and around the body in the 60s and published numerous papers in the period literature. And he did research on the effects, the negative effects of electrification and radio frequency technologies. And his book's The Body Electric, here on the right. And this book's right in the West Warwick library. I just read it over the summer. It really opened my eyes to the issue. So if anyone wants to, over the next month or two, take it out and don't take my word for it. You can read what Dr. Becker discovered. Next slide. So EMR interference and absorption. Thousands of scientific studies have shown that industrial EMR has significant non-thermal health and environmental effects. If you look up the Bioinitiative Report online, that's a project by a group of scientists to collate all these scientific studies in a way for laypeople to understand. But they take all the findings from those scientific papers and explain it in a very, so the public can understand what the findings are. So in a way, this, the industrial EMR is just an overlooked form of air pollution termed electrosmog. I mean, it's kind of been in the back, like people do cell phones cause cancer. Like it's always been a little like fringe topic, like we're not sure, we, oh, this does show that. But it is definitely becoming an issue, especially with 5G. 5G seems to be the line sand that a lot of people in the public want to draw to investigate this more. So different frequencies of EMR are absorbed by different molecules, water, oxygen. And our bodies and ecosystems have not been able to fully adapt to absorbing these post-modulated frequencies by telecom technologies. And this picture on the right just shows that the industry does note that there are issues. These are caution and warning signs outside of a 3G, 4G cell tower in South Kingston. But these, these signs are at the limit where the thermal effects are. So if you take into account non-thermal effects, like disrupting the electrical fields of the organism, these signs should be farther out. Next slide. So biological organisms, so non-thermal versus thermal health effects. Biological organisms, including humans, we have electrical properties. Doctors can take EKGs and EEG measurements, electrocardiogram, indicating that our organs have electrical, electric fields and are coordinated by the electrical central nervous system. On the technology side, different telecom technologies interfere with each other in the atmosphere, which is why the FCC divides the spectrum into bands for different energies to use, so they minimize interference. An example of that is the the 5G network will actually interfere with weather forecasts to some extent, according to scientists at the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. So telecom technologies are interfering with each other. The consequently, the subtle electric fields of our bodies and other organisms in the environment are also being interfered with. And Dr. Robert Becker gets into that in chapter 15 of The Body Electric book. If people want more information on that. Unfortunately, heating of the skin or other organ tissues, thermal effects by cell phones held next to the body, next, right next to your head, is the only health effect that the FCC currently recognizes. And non-thermal effects are dismissed, not regulated. Next slide. This is examples of EMR health effects at different power intensities. So small sample studies from the Bioinitiative Report show that even low levels of RF microwave radiation were causing sleep problems, migraines, brain fog. So below 100 microwatts per square meter, none to very few effects. At chronic low to medium levels, 100 to 500, sleeping problems, headaches. Once you get above chronic levels of 500 to 1,000, that's when you start getting serious issues. Neurological issues, cancer risk elevated. And for context, on the right, I have my own, I have a meter, RF frequency meter. And I took that out to the bike path in Coventry. So far as roll setting, it's less than five, no problem. Even the backyard, my backyard here in West Warwick, no issue, 30 to 60. One, in my bedroom, that's where there's a little issue. This is from the Wi-Fi router in the apartment. And possibly the apartments above and below have the, their Wi-Fi routers and the cordless phone banks. Those are giving off micro, radio frequency radiation. So it's 250 to 750 microwatts per square meter. So you start getting into the, maybe causing sleeping problems or other issues. Next slide. So over the past few decades, there's been this explosion of chronic disease among industrialized nations, diabetes, heart disease, respiratory diseases, cancer, and then medical diseases, depression, brain fog, insomnia. So, I mean, I'm looking at this from that, that scale view. What is, what is going on despite decades of environmental cleanups, decrease in particular pollution and numerous medical advances? Many people and ecosystems are still very sick. Why is that? So I'm thinking, how much pollution is still in our environments? Pesticides, indoor air, print air. But also this whole, the electromagnetic radiation has been overlooked, dismissed and overlooked for years. I think it's, should definitely be looked into now with, with the 5G potentially being rolled out everywhere. Next slide. So I'm not the, I'm not the only one. There's doctors and scientists, a long list of health organizations appealing to 5G rollout. 5G appeal to the European Union. The American Academy of Pediatrics are calling for updated radiation standards. Like Wi-Fi in schools and things like that. Even Worcester's down here, Worcester's School Standing Committee, they created like a best practices document to minimize exposure to radio frequency radiation. Right up in Mass. And the American Academy of Environmental Medicine, letter to the FCC to update radiation standards. So there's a long list of health organizations looking into this. So I put this in here to, I think, I mean, I was skeptical of this whole issue for a while. I put this in here because this is just visual, showing visual injury to a tree. This is a tree health study in Germany from 2008 to 2016. And they're titled, "Radio Frequency Radiation Injures Trees Around Mobile Phone Base Stations." So the side of the tree was seven and a half times the amount of radio frequency radiation from a cell phone base, cell tower, has a sickly look. You got browning leaves, a thin crown. And on the left, it's much healthier with the lower radiation. So next slide. I went to, I went to the West Warwick Sports Complex where, where our big cell tower is, just to see, are there unhealthy trees there? And this is in August. And yeah, I found these three trees right there in front of the building. And I noticed that as they peak above the building roof line, that's when they start to lose their leaves, their growth stops. So I'm sure there's other environmental factors in the health of these trees, like the drought. The drought was pretty bad this summer. So I'm not saying that this is solely caused by the cell tower, but I think the cell tower definitely has an effect on these trees. My, the meter readings I got here were 3,500 to 6,000 microwatts per square meter, which is pretty high. Down by the bike path on the Patuxa River, it's like 30, so 100 times or less. And the tree, I mean, the trees along the bike path in the river were just in much better shape than compared to right next to the cell tower. Next slide. Yeah, this is a controversial issue, but and it's been dismissed for quite a long time. But to me, it looks like it's just a similar situation to, or society's long history of downplaying environmental health issues because, I mean, asbestos, PCBs, DDT pesticides, perfluorinated compounds. All of those products were in use for decades before issues were brought up. So the whole EMR issue seems to be not much different than the past situations. It's been 30 to 40 years since the introduction of cell phones and people are becoming more aware of the EMR environmental health risks. And it's, it's understandable. I'm not blaming the corporations. You downplay the risks with their products and services because it's very costly. I mean, we're using the technology right now. It's very useful. But at some point, with, especially with the 5G rollout, we have to address something. So the trees, this is like a cascading environmental health effects. The, the trees are like the canaries in the coal mine. What happens to them is gonna happen to us as all living things share the same fundamental building blocks of life. Fortunately, we can move, we can walk away from the cell tower. They cannot. And they show what happens when an organism is bombarded 24/7 for years by the cell tower and other pollution. And many people already have chronic diseases and the industrial EMR is not causing them, but per se, but it's not helping. It's not helping people heal. So anything we do to reduce the toxic load will, will help that situation. My, many chronic disease systems. Um, my predict, many chronic disease system symptoms will be amplified if the five G network continues to be rolled out, I think. It's just really increasing, having the radiation along each street now. I mean, I don't know. Next, next slide. Uh, the, where's the federal government on this, the FCC, the title says it all in this, uh. This um, document by a professor at Harvard, uh, the Federal Communications Commission is dominated by the industries, regulates. So the telecom companies, FCC and the the military in the nineties, they kind of, um. EPA was gonna study this issue pretty, like they studied regular pollution from smokestacks and things like that. But then there was a lot of pressure to just like, kind of like ignore it and um. Unfortunately. Next slide. Um, but the FCC has actually studied the millimeter wave absorption, so millimeter waves are what the five G will use, these higher. Uh, shorter length absorption by oxygen, water and and foliage, so trees and um. But the the words health or ecosystem do not appear anywhere in this document. Just not even acknowledged, if the trees are absorbing the radiation, what is happening, i- is that affecting them negatively? Next slide. Alright, so set aside all the environmental health stuff I just went into. What about surveillance and privacy issues and information overload? Um, there's evidence that the five G network and the internet of things, like connecting your dishwasher and fridge to the internet. That'll be o- more open to hacking attempts and used by governments or companies for surveillance and control. Uh, do we really want everything to be tracked, so? So the 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 beer company knows how many times you go to the fridge to get a drink, I mean. It just seems a bit ridiculous to have e- everything tracked like that. Uh, and then you have facial recognition and surveillance cameras everywhere and it's all connected to the five G network, um. I don't know. That's up for society to decide, um, are we already drowning in data information, I mean, it's, everyone seems overwhelmed already by too much data. And. Next slide, uh. So why not just use the fiber optic cable network, um? I'm not against technology, I'm uh, against pollution, but techno- technology has wonderful aspects. So a little tongue in cheek, I mean, we wouldn't put up with pipeless water, um. It's like, imagine having sprinklers everywhere to spray water. It would just be ridiculous, um. Pipes and hoses get water to where it needs to go, the same could be done with the electromagnetic fields and the. And telecommunications information they carry. And it's already done to a large extent with fiber optics. Um, we util, we could utilize hardwire fiber optics instead of Wi-Fi or five G lining every street. And Rhode Island's already in a great spot, it's currently the state with the most fiber optic coverage at a little over eighty-four percent, so we're in a good position there. So. What to do to take action, West Warwick could pass a moratorium on the installation of five G antenna. Until health and environmental studies are completed. For example, the towns of Eastern Connecticut and Keene, Hampshire have banned five G antennas, so the precedent set in New England, I mean, dirty. And in Massachusetts, they got bills in the state senate to study the environmental effects. There's some example language, um. For a potential resolution. Uh, Building Biology Institute studies indoor air and elec- uh, electro pollution issues. And they recommend that another option is a municipality should therefore mandate that new cell antennas of any generation, four G or five G. Be placed only in commercial and industrial areas and non-residential neighborhoods. I mean, I get, I get five bars on my cellphone, I'm like over twenty-five hundred feet from the big cell tower. Still get five bars on the cellphone, doesn't have to be. I don't think the antennas have to be so close to every house. And then there's also an interest, the Geoengineering Act of twenty twenty was introduced to the Rhode Island General Assembly. Um, once passed, it can be used to regulate, uh, next slide. So it proposes to regulate deployment of radio frequency microwave radiation technologies. In addition to potential other geoengineering technologies like solar radiation management and things like that. So, anything that, uh. Deployment of frequency microwave by large infrastructures such as the five G network. And it would regulate and anything that changes, causes changes to Earth's atmospheric electric uh, climate. Um, or causing, yeah, the desiccation of terrestrial animals and plants, any damaged animals and plants should be regulated and. The reduction of animal and insect populations dependent on navigation. Dependent for navigation upon electromagnetism, so that's another issue with birds and insects is they use. Electromagnetic fields, like bees use that to get to flowers and stuff, it's not only visual. So, next slide. Uh, last, almost done, so. Another interesting thing I just came across was. From the Scientist for Wired Tech website, uh, small cells must pass NEPA review, the Federal Communications Mission. Wanted to exploit the deployment of five G. By exempting them from the National uh, Historic Preservation Act and the Nat, National Environmental Policy Act. But in August twenty nineteen, the US Court of Appeals District of Columbia vacated the FCC's rulemaking order. So the prior rule is reinstated, uh, as such, it is not lawful for any such facilities to be constructed without prior NEPA review. So, there's insurance companies, like global insurance companies who do not wanna insure the five G network for telecom companies. Because they're worried about lawsuits down the line and things like that. Alright, that's the, uh, more information's available at the following websites. Um, don't take my word for it, there's plenty of info out there, if people, over the winter, people wanna look into it. Uh, there's a Rhode Islanders for Safe Technology Facebook group with information. Uh, the documentary Generation Zapped. Uh, many doctors, scientists, engineers have been discussing this, uh, there's. A few scientists at the Department of Health that our group has been talking with. And five G, five G free RI dot com is run by a group of women from Cranston and they, they spoke to the Cranston City Council in August. So a few towns are getting on this. Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Much, um, John, if you can send that, uh. Um, presentation out to the council so we can have it. Um, I I know there is a lot of research, actually Europe is years upon us here in the United.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, uh, this was brought to me way back in probably two thousand six, before I was even on the council.
Oh, wow.
Um, that somebody actually shared a concern with me with EMF and. Um, did a lot, did did some research myself, like I said, Europe is much. Further than we are here in the United States, but if anyone wants to look it up, you can find that online also.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Appointment of interim town, town manager, resolved per recommendation from the administration, the town council hereby appoints the following individual as interim town manager.
Uh, Mr. President, if I may. Uh, again, pursuant to the charter, um, three, section three oh six, under article three town manager. The appointment should be for the acting town manager and not the interim. And secondly, uh, due to the fact that the vote was taken in executive session tonight. Uh, this should have immediately been done as the first agenda item on tonight's, um. Uh, agenda, so my suggestion would be is once the. Uh, council has voted on this particular agenda item, I would request that, um. Agenda item D one be revisited, so in fact, the uh, acting town manager. Once he's been, um, appointed, assuming that he is, can then make his recommendations and the council can vote.
Alright, um, again, this is for acting town manager. I would like to move the name of Colonel Mock Knott as acting town manager.
I'd like to second that.
We got a first, second and a third. I will take, you know, after some long discussion and uh, Mark stepping up to the plate. Of any other questions or concerns. And I'll take a roll call vote, Councilman Lichardi.
Yes.
Councilman Messier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson.
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico. Councilman D'Amico.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Just wanted to add, I wanted to to thank, uh, thank Chief Knott for stepping up. Sorry, did I cut John off?
Nah, John's breaking up again.
I just, I wanted to 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 thank Chief Knott for stepping up on the situation. Know it's a lot.
Uh, I I'm I'm very excited about it, Mark's a a West Warwick person through and through, no doubt about that, um. I I, I believe he'll do a terrific job and I appreciate him stepping up as well.
He's starting the week off on vacation.
Hey, what's better than that, right?
He's into it.
Alright, with that being said, congratulations, Mark, and we look forward to working with you, and I know, uh, your plate's already full. So, uh, you know, I know you've got a couple of days before your vacation and I know you've been working diligently over the weekend and night and after night. Already, so, um. Looking forward to working with you. As we have in the many years now.
Feelings mutual, thank you.
So that does mean you accept, correct, officially?
That is correct.
Alright, just checking, wanted that, I want that on the record.
You won't catch me moonwalking on Zoom.
That being said, I'd, I would make a motion that we go back to to D one. And approve the and ratify the executive order. Twenty twenty dash twelve that the acting town manager, um, has put before us.
Move in second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilman Lichardi.
Yes.
Councilman Messier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson.
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations, Chief Knott. Consent agendas, license applications resolved, if the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred. To proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the license applications.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion?
I'd just like to recuse myself.
For the record, Councilman Messier is accusing himself. For licenses. Any public comment on licenses? Yeah, seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote, Councilman Lichardi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson.
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash sixteen and ordinance repealing certain provisions of ordinance. Twenty nineteen dash seven and amending chapter one general provisions of the code of ordinances by adding there to. Section one dash fourteen comprehensive plan incorporated by reference.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Before we move on, I just wanna make sure, I know there was one gentleman that was waiting for the liquor license. And I'm just wanna confirm that's been approved.
Isn't that further down on the agenda?
That's what I'm looking at, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to see it, I'm, I'm, got two screens going here at once.
No, it's three more items down, Dave, acting as liquor commission.
Thank you, I just wanna make sure that the person's not sitting here waiting for no reason. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead with that again, Marion, I'm sorry, I know I gotta.
Yeah, but, um, uh. Vice President D'Amico moved the ordinance twenty twenty sixteen, seconded by Councilwoman Williamson.
Yep.
That's the, uh, removal of the comp plan. From the code of ordinances to have it incorporated by reference because it's gonna. Cost fifty-six hundred dollars to have it put into the comp, into the code itself.
Any questions for Al on that? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, Councilman Lichardi.
Yes.
Councilman Metzger.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson.
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash seventeen, second reading sponsored by Councilman Messier and ordinance amending. Appendix C traffic ordinances of the. Traffic ordinances of the code of ordinances of the town of West Warwick to include handicap parking in front of twenty-two Riverdale Avenue.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion, Al?
The second reading for handicap parking at, uh, on the south side of Phoenix Avenue. I got the wrong one.
Nope, second, they're on, uh.
Yeah, that's a twenty-two Riverdale handicap parking sign.
Any public comment on the. Parking sign? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, Councilman Lichardi.
Yes.
Councilman Messier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson.
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash eighteen, first reading sponsored by Council President Goslin. And ordinance amending appendixy traffic ordinances of the code of ordinances of the town of West Warwick. And no parking sign on south side of Phoenix Ave between Main Street and seventeen Phoenix.
Second.
Move in second, um, this was, this was brought to me, uh, numerous times over the past few years, um. We brought it to the Traffic Commission a couple of times, um, it it's definitely gotten worse. Over the past year or so, with the parking at the beginning of Phoenix Sav from. Since then, we've had a laundromat open up and also the parking in the bottlenecking. Anybody who's coming in off Main Street is actually congesting Main Street. And then there's been some. Issues where cars have almost hit each other head on, on the end of, uh, Phoenix Avenue, I know, um. A few people have brought it to my attention and I know some town employees have brought it to our attention. And, uh, this was brought before the Traffic Commission and Al, if you wanna speak on it.
The Traffic Commission sent it to me to put in the form of our ordinance. And David's giving you the background to it.
Any questions? Any public comment on this? Because it is an ordinance. Seeing none, uh, Councilman Lichardi.
Yes.
Councilman Messier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson.
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Town council acting as a liquor commission, do you wanna take these separately, Dave?
Um. How do you have them listed?
I have, that's why I have them two separate as far as the handout, so we'll do them separate.
Yeah, you got seven and eight, so.
Okay. New class B, uh, B Vic liquor license, Miss Cranston Two Realty LLC DBA, Miss Cranston Diner and Grill. Forty-five Quaker Lane.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Move in second, uh, discussion. Um, while we're on it, all taxes and everything, this is all pending, all that approval, correct?
Right, yes.
Any other comment? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, Councilman Lichardi.
Yes.
Councilman Messier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson.
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, town council acting as a liquor commission, new class B Vic limited liquor license. Milas Takeria LLC DBA Caliente Mexican Grill two eighty-nine Colesita Ave, suite seven and eight.
Make a motion.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Any public discussion? I have a hand up for the license for the liquor license for 289 Coesad Avenue. Oh, the hand went down.
Oh, he says, oh, I can leave the room, right? When can I start serving liquor?
That was actually the Miss Cranston one.
Cranston, yeah.
So they have to come, they have to, pending police fire and taxation.
I'll have Paula touch base in the morning. Or Michelle.
All right, I'm on the second license, uh, roll call vote, Councilman Lachardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Town council acting as a town council addition of taxes resolved that the attached additions in the amount of 1,156 and 17 cents presented to the tax assessor for approval of the town council in accordance with article 25, section five of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the office of the tax assessor.
Move approval.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Sal, you want to give just a little brief update on this?
Sal, you're muted.
I don't, I don't have the, uh, folder in front of me. Must have been something that we had left off the tangible. Or it could have been a swap where we had the wrong account, so we had a, a bait one which is coming up. And the cancellations, you know, we had it added on.
It, it actually says omitted in error. There are two of them, Michelle Maali Photography and Delarge Landon on Eagle School Road. Incorrect return and omitted in error.
And that's on the additions.
Correct.
Yes, they were put on without, um, they were on the original roll without a number. Uh, they had called nice citizens as they are looking for their tax bill. And we told them that we'd have to have it passed by the council first and we'd be getting it out to them.
All right, any other comment? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilman Lachardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, tax cancellation of taxes resolved that the attached cancellation in the amount of $19,225.12 presented to the tax assessor for approval of the town council in accordance with article 25, section five of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances is hereby approved. The original list is on file in the office of the tax assessor.
Resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
I, I would just ask, um, the solicitor, uh, part of that listing is Royal Mill part of lawsuit. Can you? Since that's the largest amount, it's $9,000.
That's pursuant to the agreement reached when we settled all of the matters pertaining to Royal Mill and their tangible taxes. So this matter went to mediation with Judge Richard Leach. And we settled, I believe, three cases in a row during the period of time when the case was pending, the fourth year came out. And then that was resolved, uh, with the approval of the council to settle pursuant to the same terms and conditions as the other three.
Thank you.
Any other question? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilman Lachardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Resignation of West Warwick Pension Board resolved that the town council hereby acknowledges the resignation from the West Warwick Pension Board, uh, for the town of West Warwick. Do you want me to say the name, Dave?
Yeah, well, that's a resignation, yes.
Okay, resignation from Helene Anderson Taye from the West Warwick Pension Board.
Move to accept the resignation?
I have a question first. Do we, what is, where do we, where would we stand if the resignation, if there was a resignation?
We won't be able to meet.
They do have a few meetings planned between now and the, I believe it's the end of November when Helene leaves. They're trying to get a few in.
So this is just an expiration. She's not, this is an expiration of term, and then she's, she doesn't want to re-up.
Right.
So we can, all right, and then we'll be in some trouble until we get more people on.
Well, we can advertise, start advertising now, like for, so the next meeting and the next couple of meetings, we can advertise for the pension board.
I think we have been advertising because there are openings anyway, yeah.
We advertise every meeting, yeah.
Yes.
Dave, can I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
We, uh, had a pension board meeting last night that I ran. Um, they had a new member that joined last night. They accepted Helene's resignation last night at the end of the meeting. But they said they would be able to continue to meet because of that new member that started last night. Um, if that helps clarify anything.
Yes, I know, um, I, I do have a call pending that I gotta make a phone call. The chairman did call me last night and he's actually text me tonight asking me to call him. I let him know we're in a council meeting, so.
Mr. President, you're going a little upstream from the agenda item. The only agenda item is discussing Helen Anderson Taye's resignation. Um, and I believe that's the only thing you can really discuss at this point in time.
Well, we are. We're going to discuss whether or not we're going to let her resign because this could affect the, the pension board.
Right, but you don't have any say whether or not you are going to let her resign. She can resign.
We can deny that. We've done it before.
Understood, but that doesn't mean she's going to come.
I know, but.
Right.
It's under discussion. Any other comment?
There's a motion on the floor, no second at this point?
So far, no second.
I'll second it.
Moving second, um, again, Mary Ann, if you could send her a thank you note for her time and dedication to the pension board? I'll take a roll call vote, Councilman Lachardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico, I mean, Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Um, I'm, I'm going to vote yes. I just wanted to say, you know, Helene, she lives in Ward four, five, excuse me. Um, and she has served since 2017. She's been committed, she's been dedicated and, you know, just thank you for your service and I will vote yes.
Thank you. And I'll vote yes.
Appointment for the West Warwick Recreation Committee resolves as the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a recreation committee member for the town of West Warwick.
The name of Christopher Messier?
I'll second.
Moving second, discussion?
Chris was actually on the, the recreation committee for a little bit. And we, we had that one meeting. Um, and he used to be president of the soccer association. So I, I think he'd be a really good fit. He was a good fit before when he was on.
I agree. Any other comment from the council? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilman Lachardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Discussion action. Crompton Mill up for sale, auction or bid sponsored by council president Goslin.
May I ask, before we do this, may I ask, um, if it's at all possible that we could move, um, item F up and discuss that first? I, I know that, that, uh, Delia Sylvester and Ray Doplace are on the, on in the audience or in attendance and they have been waiting for a while. And I don't think there's any other item here that, um, requires someone else from the audience to be here unless they choose to be.
Um, I have a motion to move F up on discussion action. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi. Bye.
Mary, you want to read F?
West Warwick Assistance Agency Annual Request $6,000 sponsored, sponsored by Councilwoman Williamson.
So I received a call from, uh, Mrs. Sylvester. If you remember, um, Dan Sylvester for, for many years would come before the council and ask for assistance for the food cupboard, the, the common name known as the food cupboard, West Warwick, uh, Assistant Agency. In the past, uh, I, I know last year we gave 6,000. I think that's been, uh, the norm. They are requesting 6,000 again. I think it's particularly, and, and I know we do have it in our budget, um, this year. There are people that are hurting more than usual. There's no doubt about that. And it's also the first year that, um, we'll be doing this, although Delia came before us last year because Dan wasn't well. This is the first year that Dan's not with us. And I, uh, I would recommend that we actually do indeed make that, uh, contribution.
And I, I, I totally agree with you. Um, you know, questions were asked. You know, will the food cupboard still be there if Dan wasn't there? And his family and friends have decided to keep his legacy going with that and, and assisting West Warwick. And, and, and they do assist a lot of people here in West Warwick. And it's, it's a great asset to the town. And I am actually, when you brought it to my attention, Councilwoman, I was ki- kind of relieved knowing that they're, they're still working very close in in that, uh, facility.
So I, I actually, I, I actually requested, uh, as, as I believe we should, the financials and they did provide me with the financials. I will share them with the council. Um, it is, uh, we do have a, a letter from their accountant and certified public accountant, so it all, it all is in order. And I do know that, uh, both Delia and Ray are in the audience, in attendance. I don't know if they care to speak or not. They could raise their hand if they chose to speak.
They chose to. I'm sorry, I was on mute. All right, I'll let Ray talk. Ray, you're on mute.
Can you hear me? Oh, okay, my picture's not showing up. I'm not sure why.
Name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Ray Doplace. I live at 24 Stephanie Drive in Coventry. Uh, and since April 24th, I have been the president of the West Warwick Assistance Agency. I am very grateful that the town council is willing to continue, uh, contributing to our organization. Uh, and in the money will go, uh, will be put to good use with Christmas and Thanksgiving coming up in the near future. Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask me?
Thank you, Ray. And actually, this is good that we're getting it too early this year. Usually it's in mid-November we're looking for it, so I'm glad we're here at the, uh, end of October.
Well, I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. Any other comment or questions from the council? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, Councilman Lachardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Delia. And, um, thanks, guys, for moving it up on the agenda.
Crompton Mill up for sale, auction or bid sponsored by council president Goslin.
I put this on the agenda, um, and I, I, it's I was kind of brought in and I know Councilman Lachardi has been working with the former town manager, Ernie Zimulinski, over this matter for over a year. And, um, in passing, it was brought up to my attention. And, you know, we talked about the smokestack, um, coming down and Ernie, in the last council meeting, had some items that he, uh, had asked the council to earmark some money for, and which 150,000 was earmarked for that smokestack. Um, so I know at the last meeting, I brought up the fact that, you know, there are people who are interested in that property. And at that point, I, I was kind of concerned that we're going to put a lot of taxpayer money into a property that the town took over way back when. And I know I sent to the council a picture of three booklets of a study that was done there. Um, and I, I also recommended to Don and Ernie and I think Mark actually was in the room that we find a wrecking company, find a few wrecking companies and get some pricing on that, or possibly put the land up for sale or, uh, out to bid with the stipulation of having them remove the, um, chimney itself. Uh, meanwhile, uh, Jim Jeremiah was working on it through Ernie Zimulinski as an engineer and had his structural engineer go out there and he supplied us pictures today of the actual chimney. And I, I don't disagree that it needs to come down. Um, with that being said, I did some more research with town property. And with with any sale of town property that we've had in the past, whether it's been dams or whatever, it has been on the ballot for the voters to vote on. Um, the only property that has not been on the ballot is because they have their own, um, entity per se is the attic redevelopment commission. So any land in attic, they're able to take over and, and sell and do whatever they need to do for the attic redevelopment. But any other land throughout the town, for instance, this one in Crompton, um, that would have to be on the ballot. And so, you know, Don, Don's recommendation is to take it down, the, um, the, uh, smokestack down, and he didn't get one quote, but he will have to get three quotes to do so. But with that being said, we also got to look at how much we, the town, put into this land. And if somebody is looking to purchase it, or we do put it out on the ballot come May, that we try to recoup some of that money also, um, because we did, we did the work. Um, personally, I was looking at putting it out to bid or sell it with the property purchaser doing this legwork for us in that way there. But, uh, with, with the pitches that were supplied to us today from Jim Jeremiah, um, I, I really don't think we have until May to get it down. I think they can, I think if Don goes out to emergency bid with, gets three or four bids, written bids with, uh, taking those, taking that smokestack down, we could probably do that for well under $50,000. But I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention from the last council meeting. And, and then that, that doesn't, that 150 that's earmarked for is actually, we won't need that whole 150 whatsoever.
And I think that that's important. Um, I think some of us were reluctant to approve that $150,000 at the last meeting, but it does have to go through the normal bid process. Um, I'm not sure. So we, I guess I would ask the question, how is that going to be done and who's going to spearhead that? Will we ask Jim Jeremitas, Jim Jeremiah as the engineer to spearhead it? How will that, how will that happen?
Don, you want to speak on that?
Uh, yes, uh, you would handle this as an emergency and quite frankly, when I saw the pitches today, there's two and three inch gaps, uh, 20 to 30 feet from the top. Uh, and it runs a substantial distance on the, uh, on the smokestack. I, I don't think you can wait. I think you have to declare this an emergency and we take care of it as, as an emergency. And I have already two vendors that have looked at it, talked about it. And I'm pretty sure I can get a third one. I've also talked with Jim Jeremiah about helping with the bid specs. And he will help with the scope of, um, uh, the scope of work as well as some of the legal jargon for the, uh, insurance and liability, uh, et cetera. And I think we can get it down rel- relatively quickly. And I would not go through a, um, a, a bid opening where you turn around and put it out to out to bid, wait three weeks, et cetera, et cetera. And the two contractors that I did talk to said that this tower will come down, or this, uh, smokestack will come down in a day, maybe two. Uh, they'll bring a large crane in, and it'll be like Ms. Pac-Man coming down just munching on it. And it'll be destroyed from the top down and removed completely from the site and buried at an appropriate landfill.
Don, would this, would this affect, um, we have two other businesses, one on each side, um, which are very close to the smokestack. Would this affect them in any way?
It shouldn't. Uh, they'll put plywood and stuff up against the building just in case a stray brick were to fall. But, uh, no, I don't think it would. However, if that whole stack were to fall, that would definitely have an impact.
Right. Um, we would, I knew one of them is, um, a new, it's a new business. It's a storage facility?
Yes.
And they have, I don't know how many people using the facility, but would we, we would give them ample time to let their customers know, wouldn't we?
Oh, absolutely. Um, as soon as we make a decision to move forward, I'll be talking to them probably on Monday to turn around and try to get something set up, let them know what's going on, get the contract out, introduce the contractor to them, work, get a right of entry, because we will have to cross some of their property to get to the, uh, smokestack and make sure that we, everybody understands what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Thank you, Don.
So we will move on that quickly, is that correct?
Correct. And, um, with that being said, you know, Don, just keep track of time, effort, in whatever we do, because if we do decide we're going to sell that property, um, or put it on the ballot, that we're going to need to know if we want to recoup our money, or if we're just going to give it away, or what we're going to do with it. But we want to decide as a council to, and we need probably know, and Marion, it needs to be ready, what, 30 days before the ballot? Or 90? You're on mute.
To be on the ballot?
So any sale of, any, any questions that need to be on the ballot, obviously not for this November, but, so we have an all-day referendum in May.
Right, right.
Um, any questions that need to be put on the ballot? Is that 30 days or 60 days or 90?
I would defer to Tim on that, but I'm guessing it's more 60 or 90 than 30.
Well, it'd be up to the Board of, um, of Elections who makes our ballots. It's-
Right. I'll find that out.
Yeah, contact the Board of Elections, make it determine, uh, what it has to actually be for, for printing purposes. So that'll give you a timeframe going backwards.
Timeframe for being on the ballot for, okay.
Sale of property. Or any referendum, any questions?
Right.
All right, I can do that. Okay. That all set?
Thank you.
Okay. Productive Valley Preservation Historical Society Building Project Update sponsored by Councilman Lichardi.
Yes, um, this, this was, um, an item that we had talked about and gave the approval for, uh, for the addition at the Historical Society a few months ago. And, um, I didn't really, we talked about adding it to the, adding a progress note to the agenda every month at the second meeting. The Historical Society was prepared last, at the last meeting, but I just wanted to keep it consistent. So this is the first progress note, um, and there'll be two more for the following year, but I believe Jerry Telly is, is on.
Yes, he is. I'll allow Jerry to talk.
He, he's the one that really, he spearheaded this, so he'd have a lot more information than I would.
Jerry, you are on mute, just state your name and address.
All right, Jerry Telly, 136 Berlin Game Road. We did have a meeting, uh, with, uh, Solicitor Williamson, and we agreed to give a monthly report to the council. Uh, this was back in August. Uh, September, things just got started, and I'd been in contact with Councilman Lichardi on the progress, and, uh, this was the first agenda that I'm actually reporting to you. So back in, um, September, we signed a contract, uh, with Paul St. Armond, who is the general contractor for the project. We have, we had to do a few things, uh, to get this thing going. Uh, we had a new oil tank installed and moved at the same time within the building. A building permit was granted. Uh, we had the excavation done. The foundation's been cut to tie in to the, one basement to the other. Uh, the footings, French drains, and foundations were poured. And the waterproofing was done of the foundation, uh, yesterday, and we started to backfill it today. So that's our progress report. Uh, we have really not found too many problems. Um, there was some large rocks, very large rocks in there, but, uh, the excavator that we had there was big enough to move them and, uh, take them off-site. We've not found anything, um, unexpected. Things are going good, and I'm estimating that they're going to start, uh, putting a deck on next week. They have the steel beams are in place. Uh, trusses have been ordered and are ready. So probably next week, uh, you'll start to see the deck go on, and then the walls and roof, uh, should go rather quickly, once everything, uh, is in place.
Thank you, Jerry. Any questions for Jerry or, uh, Councilman Lichardi? No, I saw the foundation installed the other day, looks good.
Yeah, we, we get a lot of people, um, doing a lot of volunteer work. Um, yeah, uh, I, I'll bring that up at another time, but, um, the excavation was, cost us nothing, the, to move the oil tank cost us nothing, other than, other than, uh, supplies. So we're on the right foot, and, uh, we'll be proceeding, and I'll give you a report next month.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
AT&amp;T Project at Mezniki Field Update sponsored by Town Solicitor Williamson and Chief Verone.
I thought the council might want an update as it relates to the, uh, conversations in the Zoom meetings that have been taking place over the last couple of months with representatives from AT&amp;T, Chief Verone, um, and John Botello. So Chief, I think I can turn it over to you, and you can explain to the council, uh, the mechanics of what's been going on better than I can.
Yeah, so, um, over the past year, uh, we've been going back and forth. Uh, they have recently identified, I guess, some structural things that they want to do to strengthen, strengthen, uh, the tower itself, uh, that will have, um, you know, uh, good impact for us. When the lease is over, it will, uh, you know, in- increase the stability of the tower overall. Uh, they're going to be moving our whips up, uh, 10 feet to allow them more room at the level, uh, top, where the top level is now, to expand their, um, capabilities. So they, um, they plan on, uh, actually doing the work in, toward the winter, so it's not something that's going to be happening in the next couple of months, but, um, you know, that is, uh, pretty much where we are right now. So I don't know if Director Botello has anything else to add on that?
Uh, no, Chief, I think you've, uh, quantified everything well. It's just, it's going to look a little different. Um, you did say they're going to solidify and strengthen that, uh, uh, tower, and I guess I, speaking with Peter Harrison, who's our consultant with Tactical Communications, uh, there's going to be significant, uh, welding going on, and they're actually going to replace some beams at the top of that tower to strengthen the tower. And from what I was speaking with Peter, uh, yesterday after our meeting, he says that's going to make our tower just as, uh, strong at the top as it is at the bottom. So it's going to be, uh, it's going to be some added, uh, value to our tower.
Any questions on that? Thank you for the update.
Update from Solicitor Williamson and Department of Public Works Director on Factory Street Playground sponsored by Councilwoman Williamson.
Uh, as I informed the council, uh, I received my last packet of documents from Ernie's office last Wednesday. Um, I went through about 75% of them today, so, um, my update is that there are no other documents to receive from any more, uh, department heads and/or, uh, members of the administration. So the full report will be ready for you along with the binders, uh, prior to the next meeting, and I would suggest that, um, significant time be set aside, uh, to allow me to present, um, the full investigative report in the first meeting, before the first meeting of November, um, in 2020.
Any questions for the-
So you want to be on the agenda for November 10th? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that, I think, unless, unless something, um, comes up to, to delay this further, I think at that point in time, the entire report will be provided to you, hopefully the Thursday or Friday before the meeting, and then I'll make the presentation and answer any questions at that point in time.
So Marion, can you make sure that we make sure that's going to be on the first agenda item for the next meeting?
I have it on for November 10th, I won't forget.
Tim, will, will this, after that, will this be put to bed?
Uh, I believe so. I think, uh, based upon what's been going on for the last month, and I think Don can address that better than I can, uh, I think the issues that, um, were brought to the attention of the town, and then addressed by the Governor's Commission on Disabilities, and then bringing the contractor back into play, I think all of the items that were originally addressed, uh, have been completed, with the sole exception of possibly Don, the, uh, ramp and the two parking spots. But he can address, uh, those particular issues, Councilman. But I think the, uh, report that I provide to the council is going to give you all of the information, uh, going back four years, right up to the present, uh, the players involved, what was done, what wasn't done, and also, uh, some sug- some suggestions that the council can probably use to its benefit going forward when there are similar projects like this, um, undertaken by the town.
Thank you.
Do you guys want an update from me also?
Yes, Tom.
Okay. The, uh, I got the plans for the parking, uh, and parking spots on Monday. I sent them to you, I believe, today, so you have that. I did an estimate up what it will cost to finish that, uh, playground, and it's $8,100. And I'll try to find places in my budget to do that. I'm going to go out to get a bid from two different vendors that are, have contracts in the town that can handle that, um, uh, parking area. We will be dumping a bunch of large boulders there probably, uh, either tomorrow or Thursday, uh, to put around as a safety stop, uh, to keep a vehicle from crashing in. The only place that we won't have the boulders will be where the parking area is, and there are six bollards that are going to be put in, uh, right on the edge of where the, uh, walkway is, the pathway to get into the, uh, playground. And, um, those are being ord- they're either ordered or being ordered. Uh, uh, Home Depot didn't have them, and we're now working on, uh, uh, one of the other two companies that we tried to get quotes from on it. Uh, so I, I think we'll have that in play. The big question is, what do you want to do with the wood chips versus rubber matting? And I sent you information, one, I had a, uh, a proposal for $92,000 that did not include the under part of it, the gravel underneath. So that would easily have been a hundred to $105,000 proposal. And then I pulled some stuff off from, um, Google, and it was between 115 and I think 125. So to do that in rubber, you're going to spend 100 to 125,000. Uh, that's not a decision I think we can make in October and November. My recommendation would be spend the 2,000 and put the wood chips down, and then have a real hard look at this in the spring to see if you want to put it in as a capital item. The one thing I will caution you on is the wood chips, um, from a safety standpoint or an injury standpoint, is six times safer than a rubber, uh, membrane. Uh, your fall, uh, it just absorbs the fall, uh, so much better, uh, particularly if it's maintained better. And I'll be the first to tell you, it hasn't been maintained well in this town. But I now have four employees in the parks, and that would be at minimum a weekly, uh, time for somebody to go through and just rake and clean that up a little bit. Uh, we had a platform donated, uh, for the entryway. It's the blue structure, if you drive by it, and it's designed to be, uh, right at the right level. You come in, it has the tapered ends, uh, the tapered, uh, part of it. It's, I believe it's five by five, so it meets the ADA requirement for turn radius, et cetera, et cetera. So we already have that piece, and the, um, you know, we're pretty much ready to start moving on that anytime, uh, you guys would want. But I wanted to wait and let you at least weigh in on whether you want wood chips or whether you want to wait until the spring, because we can't just close the playground down for the rest of the winter. Uh, it really doesn't get utilized that much after Thanksgiving. The other issue on that playground, and it's one we're still trying to sort out, the merry ground actually passes on one set of ordinance, uh, recommendations, et cetera, but it doesn't pass on the Rhode Island, uh, statue. And so we're trying to get a clarification on, it's not technically a merry ground, it's a, uh, I can't remember the term they use, but i- it's a merry ground in my book, and, um, it doesn't meet the requirement on the bottom level. You, you're not supposed to have, um, you're, you're supposed to have 12 inches, and we only have nine inches of clearance between the, uh, um, the surface and the, uh, bottom of the merry ground. It, it's really kind of weird. To me, it looks extremely safe, but I'm not the, uh, uh, I'm not the ADA or the, uh, child, uh, playground expert. So we're still looking into that. We're still trying to get an answer from the manufacturer to see if there's some kind of an exemption, and if they can provide that. If not, that piece of equipment's just got to come out, and that's not a big deal, we can handle that in-house. And other than that, I think we're pretty well set.
Mary Beth, I think you had some questions.
No, yes, um, so, so thank you, Don. I'm not sure where you get your information about the safety and the six times, um, safer, uh-
From the ADA expert that we had on board there.
The governor's, uh, she, she did, the woman that was out there when I was there didn't seem to, to indicate that, but nonetheless, what, what she did say is that we would have to rake that daily. I, 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 and I asked that, I, excuse me, I asked that this be put on the agenda because it doesn't make sense to me to get the playground done, set up, finished, and then take it apart next, next year. Uh, the membrane, in my estimation, is the better way to go. The maintenance issue, I think, is a huge issue, and when you do a cost benefits and analysis in the long run, uh, given the manpower that you might use, um, I, I just think it's a, a smarter thing to, to invest in. That's, that's my opinion, and I wanted to have that discussion. I would also hope that we would, um, I, I'm, I assume you're keeping records as to the costs going into this playground or this, um, this phase of the playground, and that we will have a report, uh, once it's done.
Absolutely.
So I, I wanted to talk to the, the rest of the council about, uh, membrane versus wood chips. Wood chips, uh, as far as accessibility, and I know we talk about how their ADA, uh, being able to maneuver, uh, a wheelchair in there with wood chips, I think is far more difficult. I know that, uh, there are playgrounds where I have seen the membrane. Again, I'm not so sure, I haven't read the safety, I haven't seen that, you haven't provided that to us, Don, I know you said that in an email, but I'd like, I'd like the rest of the council to weigh in as well.
I, I wanted to echo what you said, Mary Beth, about, you know, the cost, I mean, the cost of the rubber is more, but I mean, if we're having somebody come out there every day, I mean, that's, it's not going to take long before we hit that number, but having, you know, obviously, the playground's going to require maintenance, but with those wood chips, it's going to require a lot more. So, I mean, I think it's going to cost more, but I think in the end, it's going to be less.
They're really the only raking, I mean, the playground's big, but it's going to be around the play structures. There's not going to be outside with a, on the inside of the fence, you know, in the immediate placement over there. I think that personally, it'd probably take one guy about a half an hour to go and just rake it, I mean, you're not, you're not grading it, I mean, you're raking it up, you're making it neat. Don, my, I have a couple of questions. One, on what you call the merry-go-round. At what point, if that has to come out, where does that go? Is that something that we can, we can exchange for another piece of equipment?
I haven't gotten that far, Jason. I know I can remove it, if it's unsafe, it has to come out, whether it gets stored somewhere at the DPW, whether we try to use that as a trade to get another piece of equipment, we probably can do something like that, or if we just take it to the dump. Now, out of all that equipment, that's probably the least expensive piece of equipment in there.
Is, is that possible? Could we use that at, if it has to come out, could we use that at another playground?
Uh, no.
Why not, why not?
Well, if it doesn't pass, if it doesn't pass that playground, ADA or child safety, why would it be passed at another playground?
Because when it, because when it, let me clarify that for you, Councilman, hold on one second. Clarification, anything installed pre-GDA, the ADA compliance would have been fine, but because you're installing it somewhere on that date, that's why it has to be ADA compliant.
That's fair.
So is the, is the piece of equipment doesn't fit, or is it, if it meets the twelve, twelve inches from the ground, I'm not understanding?
It's complicated, and as I said, it qualifies under one code, and it doesn't qualify under the other code. And I'm trying to go back to the manufacturer right now to figure out, do they have an exception, do they have an answer for this? And if not, then talk to the state, find out what their spin is on it. But ultimately, right now, I don't believe it qualifies under the Rhode Island code.
I, I think it's very important, we reach out to Denise, quite honestly, because we're, I, I, I know that we are going back to her to get final sign-off, so we might as well do that now, not wait.
No problem.
Did you have something, Councilman Messier?
No, I chimed in already, so, yeah, I, what I already said, I mean, I think the cost analysis of, of having somebody go out there, I mean, even if it is somebody going out there for a half hour every day, I mean, that's, that's if it is a half hour. I mean, I still think that in the end, my opinion would be to add the rubber membrane.
David, I know we typically don't look at hands during anything but public comment, but perhaps there are hands that have some expertise in this regard.
I'm going to allow Mr. Moye to talk.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely, Brian Moye, one thirty-two Rollingwood Drive, North Kingston, Rhode Island. I am speaking as a landscape architect this evening. My license number is three nine six in the state of Rhode Island. There's a couple of things that come to my attention. In particular, I am, I kind of went back into my file on this issue since I worked on a pro bono basis with Mr. Palazzo, bringing it to the, the Governor's Commission. And there's a couple of points that I don't think have been addressed, and I'm just looking at the original letter that was sent to the previous town manager, Ernie Zimulinski, dated December fourth, two thousand and nineteen, where in item number, and I'm just going to scroll down here, excuse me. Item number four, excuse me, I don't have my glasses on, there are no equally accessible connections between existing town public spaces and the parking lot. So basically, what the governor's office is saying is that Factory Street is a public road, there needs to be a handicap accessible route from a public road in addition to any public parking spaces that are, that are posted inside the, the park. In addition to that, there's a couple of other things. The fencing that's been reinstalled around the park, playground, in item number eight, the fencing around the playground is required to have a protective cap installed, that falls under ADA requirement two thousand and ten standard one thousand and one. So I think that is an item that is outstanding. I would argue and kind of agree with Councilman Messier and Councilwoman Williamson that in the, Bob Cooper is Bob Cooper, I believe, is it, yeah, Bob Cooper's letter, he himself stated that he recommended that it would be some sort of rubber membrane that is the appropriate surface. Regarding the rubber membrane, I think that the most important thing to take into consideration when you're looking at what a rubber membrane may cost is you need to know what the maximum fall height is for any of the apparatus, swings, slides, whatever it may be, that have been proposed in the park. And there's, there's some very simple charts and data that kind of support how thick the rubber membrane needs to be. Based on my observation, and I have not seen the actual specifications on the equipment installed, or I haven't reviewed them as of recent, I would guesstimate that the maximum height is somewhere around a six to eight foot height. That being said, you'd probably need about two to two and a half inches of a rubber membrane surface. I've worked on many of these parts, and I've seen costs anywhere between eight dollars a square foot to fourteen dollars a square foot on the high end for the rubber membrane. That doesn't include the base material, as the DPW director had discussed, but I would say that that's a nominal cost in terms of what the investment of the rubber membrane would be. My guesstimate, as I had previously pointed out to the council, is that if you take an average of ten dollars a square foot, kind of somewhere in the middle, that you're not in the fourteen, you're not in the eight dollar range, ten dollars, I did some quick math, it's about a six thousand square foot, you know, play facility, provided that you're doing the entire play surface with the rubber membrane, you have about a six, sixty thousand dollar investment just for the membrane, and then factor in, you know, probably five or six thousand dollars in additional to put the gravel in or whatever sort of base that the manufacturer would suggest. Most of the time, it's a, you know, a six to eight inch gravel base. So I, I agree wholeheartedly with, with Councilwoman Williamson as well as Councilman Messier, and that doesn't happen too often, but I would suggest that the amount of cost that it's going to take to maintain a mulched surface, although Councilman Lichardi says, well, it's no big deal, just brush it around, I mean, you have to keep in mind that engineered wood fiber, which is what certified, certified playground chips are, they are a natural product, and they decompose, and they do lose their effectiveness over time, which means that every so many years, more chips have to be added to make sure that it is compliant. And, and I'm not certain, I, the DPW director raised an interesting point, and I just need to check some additional information on whether it's six times greater. I've looked at some studies that suggest if, if it's the proper rubber membrane surface, that, you know, it complies greater with ASTM F one two nine two, which is a safety transmission service that tests all these different types of products. So I do think that there are still items that are lingering. I think that overall, the town has made a good effort in pushing this project closer to compliance. And my last point is as follows, I'm not sure if anyone was really tuned in to the earlier part of the council meeting where the gentleman was presenting about the radiation side effects from the five G and four G networks, and pointed out that the cell phone tower up at that complex is probably within several hundred yards of where this playground has been situated, whether it makes sense to have done a study as to whether there's going to be excess radiation affecting children, you know, playing and using this playground. Now, by no means am I suggesting that all the work that's been done over the last month is for no good, but I think I've, I've said this before, with good planning, and I think in this case, from the onset, there was poor planning, it, it could have been done a lot better and studied all of these different elements. That, that's all I have for you this evening. I thank you all for allowing me to speak, and if I don't speak with you all soon, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Brian, I have one more hand up.
Dave, can I ask you a question first?
This last time, it caused havoc. Yes, go ahead.
You want some, I can go afterwards, doesn't matter. You can ask, entertain the question, that's fine.
No, go ahead, Jay.
All right, um, I just, again, I'm trying to like, see if we can put this to bed. So I don't know if this is a question for, for Don or for Tim. And Tim, if this is going to be in your report, then, then just let me know. Are we still missing, are we missing anything from Pro-Bilt, are we done with Pro-Bilt?
I think Don can answer that question. Until the job has been completed, I really can't comment on whether or not Pro-Bilt has completed its obligation to the town pursuant to the contract and the agreement that they originally entered into. So Don might be able to address some of the things that have taken place over the past thirty days to address your concerns.
Okay.
Jason, they came in, they reset the elevation on every piece of equipment out there. Everything is one point five percent or less. The fencing has all been reset. As far as I'm concerned, they're, they're done with the installation of this product. Where you go from here, if you put new rubber down instead of wood chips, we put the parking lot in, all of that stuff is on the town. And again, I think the contractor went above and beyond coming back and doing this work. And if I believe him in that he says, hey, I pointed a lot of this stuff out at the beginning, and I was told just to put it in. So, you know, that's, unfortunately, that was a poor, a poor execution of a contract. And unfortunately, and I don't want to get on a soapbox, but the, the way they run these playground grants is they give you the grant, and then they tell you, you got thirty days to get it in. And that's essentially what happened on this particular grant.
Don, I'm going to correct you on that, you're way off on that.
Am I way off, then?
Your soapbox has just collapsed, I mean, you're way off on that.
Okay.
You're so far out of realm on that, this project has been going on for four years. It was actually on the agenda with Councilman Jeru when they got the grant for that. So to say it only took thirty days and it was forced down the town's throat to get it done is totally wrong.
Well, I know the contractor had, and I have letters that say this.
But Don, Don, you are wrong. What happened is he might have letters that say this, but this, again, was on Councilman Jeru's watch, he was the councilman who pushed for this to be there. Councilman Messier got elected and took it over under Ward Three, even though it's in Ward One, and Councilman Lichardi can tell you that it was on the rec committee's agenda a couple of times, but they could not meet on it, and that's why this, it did get down to the final month of, boy, we got to get it done because the grant is expiring. But what you said about thirty days is totally wrong.
Okay, from what I understood, the contract was awarded, and the guy had a very, very short window to get it completed. And if I'm wrong on that, then I'm fine, I'm wrong on it. Go ahead, Tim.
That's, that's completely not true.
Okay, I wasn't here, so I'll.
Right, that's, well, that's one of the problems with, with, you know, changing personnel, but again, my report will be a complete chronology from start to finish. If your discussions with the contractor are different than what was told to the town council in the past, I'm going to be very interested in what that contractor has to say, because I've sent him two letters, and he has not responded to either one of them. So what he may be telling you is something he thinks you may want to hear, but what he's telling you may not be completely accurate. So let's just wait until, I mean.
I did have.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I did have the opportunity to meet the contractor, he was up there, as Don said, he was, you know, actually working himself. I did let him know that there's an ongoing discussion with the town council, and that we may indeed ask him to come and, and speak to the town council if that is appropriate, and he seemed open to that possibility.
And the only other, the only other question and concern I have on this matter is going back to Mr. Moye's comments with the two numbers, I forgot the two numbers that he threw out there on the list. I know, Don, you're working very close with the Governor's Commission and everybody, I mean, you keep us very well up to date in sending us emails and who's meeting you up there and whatever. Have they brought these concerns or are these concerns, because the last thing I want is, we're all said and done, we think everything's great, we open up this playground, and then the state comes in and says, nope, you're not compliant, although they, they were with us throughout the entire process.
I, I don't know how to answer that. Yes, I'll keep her in, in, informed, and I will turn around and say, these are the last questions that we have from a town. For example, capping the playground fence, that was something that I had in the back of my mind, there was a note that I had to ask. So if I have to put one of those little, almost looks like a, those little tubes that you float on, almost looks like that over the top of it, I'm more than happy to get that done. I know that's not real expensive. The, the thing about the merry-go-round, that's still something that needs to be resolved, but as far as all the grades and the parking lot, that is going to be handled, and that's going to be perfect. So I don't see any real issue with them. And Mary Beth, you've talked with her as well, I don't think she has any real issue with what she's seeing out there, but we'll try to get an official report from her.
Again, the last conversation, that you're right, she seemed happy with the progress. I mean, things were apart when she was last there, unless you've had her there since then, which I, I made it clear that we as a town want her to sign off, and she said, I expect to be asked to sign off. And we should keep her involved, and, and if, if the, and I, Mr. Moye talked about a December fourth letter, if we're not, if we haven't followed up with that, we should pull that out and call the governor's office and say, please come out and make sure we're good. We want them to sign off on everything. I agree with David, we don't want to have a surprise at the end that, oh, oh, wait a minute, we need to do something else.
And I still have somebody with their hand up, Mr. Reed. Just state your name and address for the record.
John Reed, sixty-two Andrews Avenue, West Rock, Rhode Island. Just a couple of questions, I'm listening to this.
Can you hear him?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
I'm going to listen to the parks thing, the playground thing again. It seems like we're chasing our tail again, there's, there's things that, you know, there's books, there's regulations, the state has them, the government has them, you know, we're talking about railings, somebody doesn't know the railings belong on there. I mean, how long is it going to take before we go one foot in front of the other? We're taking three steps forward, four steps back, okay? Okay? The report is going to be very interesting from Mr. Williamson. I hope you contacted state agencies about the certified payroll. And you speak of a contract. The contractor should have looked at the, go back to the contract. Let's not forget, there is no contract. Although the RFP stated verbally many times to be in the contract, to be in the contract, with the contract. We never had a contract, so I don't know where that verb root is going. But it just seems like this is a small pop. How on earth we can go on and on for years with this thing is insane. Absolutely insane. And my next question is, where was the money appropriated to even do any of this? Have we, has the town voted? Have you voted and appropriated money for this? And one question for Councilman, Mr. Williamson. When you were at that meeting, what was it stated to you that the plan was on? If you don't mind me asking?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
Okay, when you were at that meeting, could you tell me what the comment was or what the plan was?
Yes, I made it clear. I actually said it in the last, in the last meeting, that that the contractor said that it was no formal plan, it was scratched out on a napkin.
Thank you. So I think that's kind of how we got to where we are.
But but again, that he did indeed, he did indeed say that. We will, we will get to, and I assume the solicitor's report will have whatever information we may need to go forward, so.
Yeah, because with, I know, Councilman, I'm sorry. You know, Councilman Lachardi, I mean, I know you and I received numerous emails with colors and schematics of different colors of the playground and whatever. So I find that hard to believe that it was on a napkin per se.
And again, that's that's just what the gentleman said. And he said it in front of a group. There's no question about that, including the, including the the woman from the Governor's Office, Denise. So is that concerning? Yes. I have no reason to say that's not true, but I don't know because I wasn't there when anything was sketched out. But I'm sure we will have an opportunity to to find out exactly what kind of plans were presented. But yes, yes, John, you're right. That's exactly what he said.
Okay, and just my other statement is, I know Mr. Williamson's good at what he does, but I received all the information that he's looking for, except for acknowledgement from some state agencies in ten days. It took me three hours to go through it to find out the thing was a total disaster. Now, we're looking at two months, if I'm not mistaken, to get an investigation. I'm just, you know, but I'm very interested to see what his result is. And I believe, and I'm going to make this statement just so somebody can prove me wrong at the end. I believe that the solicitor is going to ask that this be turned over to a state agency for investigation. That's what I think we're going to get, but we'll wait to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns on the playground?
No, we didn't. We didn't come up with an answer about the, what the ground cover would be, and that doesn't have to happen today. But I think I would hate to go forward with the wood chips at this point in time if indeed we're going to decide that the membrane is the better answer. So we can leave it at that.
Can I ask a question?
I'm not sure who that is, but.
Derek.
Oh. Go ahead.
So earlier, the referral to wood chips, using the wood chips and raking it daily and all this stuff. I gotta ask Don, Don, what kind of wood chips are you planning on using?
They'd be the certified wood chips. They have to come from a special manufacturer and you know, you just can't buy wood chips. So there's a again, go ahead.
Did you? Not right at all. Eighteen hundred dollars. Can I tell you that wood chips cost from the place that manufactures it forty-four dollars and seventy-one cents a cubic yard? So ninety yards times forty-four dollars and seventy-one cents is not eighteen hundred dollars. That's cost from the manufacturer. That's not even retail. That's cost. So I think, I think some people need to really pay attention about the decisions being made or the suggestions being made. And we need to make sure we have the numbers, the proper numbers in place before we speak. The actual number at forty dollars, never mind the forty-four dollars, is thirty-six hundred dollars to do that playground with manufactured wood chips, ADA compliant, not eighteen hundred. So if we went forward with the wood chips, and this is why I'm asking this question, if we went forward with the wood chips at eighteen hundred dollars, we would be non-compliant again.
It's obvious it's a.
Listen, you guys don't, you guys have a bad taste in your mouth with the reeds and the moyo and all that. But maybe you should, somebody should pick up the phone and say, guys, can you help us with the proper materials? Where can we get it? What does it cost? What will it take? Like, it's available to you for nothing. Pick up the phone. It's a free phone call. It doesn't even cost twenty-five cents anymore. That's all. Instead of us coming out there, finding the problem, hitting you with the problem, denial comes in play, boom, we go to the ADA, then you get hit with another letter. It's it's real simple. And we're offering it for nothing. If you got a question, you need the material, we do this for a living. Both the reeds and the moyo, Mr. Moye. It's it's very simple. We're not, you know, we're banging heads on a lot of things. But there's a playground in jeopardy. At the end of the day, it's a place the kids can't play. I knew when you said the mulch number, the last meeting, it was wrong. You've got a price on wood chip that comes out of a chipper when your tree that you cut down on Main Street goes through the chipper, that's what goes in the playground. It's not ADA compliant wood chip. It's not processed, it's not tumbled, it's not desplintered, it's not wood chip for a playground. It's wood chip that goes through a chipper from a tree and laying down in the street. That's eighteen hundred dollars. Because half the price, it's twenty dollars per cubic yard, my cost from the plant. And that's it.
Obviously, we have some research to do. Thank you for your input. And I think everyone at this point wants to get this put to bed. I think Councilman Messia did too, but Lachardi said it several times. It's time to get this squared away, done, and done right, and have it be a place that we're proud of.
Shall I continue with the parking lot and get that to where it's ADA compliant? And then leave the flooring decision for a later date in time. We'll just lock the thing up. We've got a little bit of cleanup to do in there, and then just leave it for the winter as is.
If you, if you're ready to go with the, with the parking, I would say, why not? But that's.
Okay. Is that the council's preference?
I'd like to see the cost analysis of fully installed, Don, with the proper equipment, proper base.
Oh, you're talking about the playground itself now? I'm just talking about the.
I'm talking about everything. I want to, you know.
Okay.
You know, we're talking about the membrane, you know, if we're going to go with the membrane, then so be it. I just want to make sure that everything's done right.
Okay.
To read, you know, Derek and I don't always agree, and I'll say that, but you know, just going online, looking up the price for those wood chips right here, he is right. It's between forty and fifty dollars a cubic foot. So, I mean.
I know we bought a bunch of them this spring, and I will find out where we got the wood chips from and make sure that they were, in fact, certified wood chips.
Thank you. Any other questions on this?
Yeah, I think it'll probably be a topic again. I would agree, Don, if you, if you're ready and Gifford's ready and you got the the parking thing, go ahead. But at this point, maybe it's best to. I agree, David. Let's get some numbers and certainly don't want to put more wood chips in there if we're going to wind up taking it all out and get it down to gravel, so.
Thank you. We'll have more on this next month. Thank you. Marian?
Okay, I believe we're on G, alternative, alternatives, options to complete outstanding projects in town sponsored by Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes, that's a topic that we've had several times. Don, you've done a nice job telling us how you're spending your time, DPW crew, getting a lot done and a lot accomplished. There's no doubt about that. But there are a number of things. I know that I have taxpayers, constituents here in Ward One that have drainage issues. They have, I can think of three off the top of my head. We, back in the spring, told them that we would address them, and we haven't. And I I'm just looking for creative and alternative ways to get these done because it's not fair to them to say, sorry, you didn't make the list, or you didn't make the cut. There are, there are times, I guess one recommendation I would have, and I've had this conversation with you, David, is to ask the taxpayers to go out and get a quote to get the work done. Because, Don, you've you've made it clear that you don't have the the manpower to get these things done. Not to actually have the work done, but to get a quote and then bring it back to the council and let us vote on it if it's a reasonable price for them to not have to go through the winter with flooding in their in their backyards and the spring with flooding in their backyards. I know that, I think it's just something that we need to address. We need to pay more attention to the needs of the taxpayers.
So I know, Councilwoman, we've had this discussion numerous times, and I've had the situation happen to me in my ward. And personally, if if the town has given ample time to resolve an issue, and it hasn't been resolved, and it's town, it's a town matter. I agree. You know, how much more can a homeowner take? Especially, you know, examples, you know, I know we're being told we work off a work slip system, a work order system. Well, some of these work orders are two, three years old, and some of the newer stuff is getting done and not the older stuff. So I'm not sure if the the system is, we start from the top and work our way to the bottom? Or do we flip the list over and start from the bottom and start from the top? It's all confusing, and it's just, you know, in situations where individuals are getting it done this year, and then some people have been waiting three years. So we got to, we got to figure out a system. And, 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 Don, you know, once you start getting your staff up to speed, I, you know, we know we've had discussion about concrete and when it can be poured. I know we've had numerous discussions, and we can discuss that until our face turns blue, but you know, it's just, the residents need to get at least, at least, at the most, a call back and told when and when they think they're going to be working on it. And if it doesn't, and it gets put off, the resident should be called and said, we're sorry, due to weather, due to rain, we're going to be, we're pushed out three, four weeks. Just like when, you know, personally, you go to a store and you order, or if I hire somebody to do my driveway, and they say, yeah, we're going to be out in two to four weeks, weather permitting, and we had two weeks of rain. Well, hopefully, they're going to call me and say, you know, Mr. Goslin, we're sorry with the two weeks of rain. It's pushed us out two weeks. That way, there the resident knows when we're going to be there. That doesn't happen here in West Warwick. We get either no call back, or we get a call back, oh, we'll be there sometime soon. Sometime soon never happens. They continue to call down there. And unless, unless it's somebody down there yelling and screaming every single day, it doesn't seem to get done.
So I do have a handful of people that I want to approach and let them know that they should they should have somebody look at the jobs that need to be done because I just can't in good conscience keep on going back to them and saying, two weeks, two weeks, two weeks, two weeks. It doesn't work. And and I would be aggravated, I am aggravated, and it's not my property. And I think there are others in, I think other council people have the same, same issues.
Don, I know you just, you haven't even been here a year yet. And you came in and a lot was, a lot of work was given, a lot of projects were put on your plate. I know you had some ideas of your own and gotten some things done. And there's only so much time, and you were short-staffed for a long time. But where the frustration comes from is, you know, on, I, on my end, I'll speak for myself, because I have a lot of outstanding projects. And and I'm one of the ones that have had some of these projects on the list. And all of a sudden, like, like Council President Goslin said, new things have been gotten, have gotten done. So when am I, I'm looking at it as when are the projects in Ward Four going to be put on top of the list? Because there's always something that's going to come up. And I don't know at this point, I mean, we're in mid-October. So we only have about what, maybe two months of of outside, well, depending on the weather, if you want to plan, right? I mean, only a couple of months of planned outside work, but I don't know what to tell people anymore. I mean, I can't. Yeah, and, and it's true. We've gone through one, two, three, four different people in your position, you being the fourth in in four, in less than four years. So it's, but they don't want to hear that. You know, because that's what's been being said all along. So I know I would like to see what, what the list is, and I thought we were going to get that. Like, I picture the list as a one through a one hundred, or one through two hundred list of priorities that would just be checked off as they're done. And realizing that some might take a half a day, some might take a week, some might take three weeks, I get it. But, I mean, I think it'd be easy, easy for us to understand as a council kind of where things are and what, where we're up to speed.
I thought we provided you the list, but we'll go back through and do that. I also remember in the.
The list that was provided, though, was basically the project. I think it was, we asked for a little bit more detail. Correct me if I'm wrong. Mary Beth, I think you would ask for it.
And during our, during our. We're talking about the whiteboard list and the projects and, and those are the, that, we never received that. We received a list of items that need to be worked on, but not the, not the project list. You know, the Wilson Street, the Kathleen Court, the Louise Drive, the Carrie Anne Drive. So.
Okay.
Again, these people, at this point, I think we, I hear you telling us is that your plate is full for the rest of the year, and, and that's not, that's the way it is, that the handling you've been dealt. I know you haven't had a full compliment, but we need to be able to, to give some satisfaction to these taxpayers. That's, that's how I feel at this point in time.
Don, I know we discussed tree work. We approved over a month ago a tree contract with the company, and you said they were going to start next week. Well, that was the week after we approved their contract. Have they started any tree work in West Warwick?
I believe they have. I believe they have removed eight out of the eleven or twelve trees that we gave them. So by the end of the week, they will have taken care of, hopefully, the first wave of trees.
Can we get an update on that?
Yes.
So Queen, Queen was on there, and based on the conversations we had, I went back to them to to let those people know that those four trees are coming down. I don't know whether they've come down. Actually, I'll ride by tomorrow, but we made it, again, based on what we were told, and I was asked if Queen. And I was asked if Queen was the one, were the ones we were talking about. Absolutely. If they haven't been taken down, I I told them a month ago it would be within a week or two, again.
Pockers the same way.
A credibility, I I it just doesn't work. And I can't, I can't in good conscience just say to these people, sorry, you gotta wait another year. I I can't do that.
All right, any other further questions on this matter? Thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay, authorization to construct a shed on fifteen Gendron Street, Platte five lot. By sixty, sponsored by Council President Goslin.
I'm gonna, um, after further discussion with the homeowner, which is actually, I'll I'll give you a little brief update. Barbara and Stan Tabak also owned a piece of land called, but it was under John J. Clark. Um, and they were looking to erect a shed on the property at fifteen. Gendron Street, which is attached to the properties at twelve Gendron Street. Um, they're gonna actually withdraw and actually fill out the proper applications to go before zoning. And hopefully be on the December third for a variance to put the shed up. This shed is. Um, actually, they could bring it up to the zoning board, but I wanna make it clear to the council and to the zoning board. That this shed is to be erected so they can store all the part, the plants. Um, the plant's parts that they use for Arctic and for River Point. And they they want a place to store them, so they're stored safely and actually Barbara washes them out every single year. Um, and she just, she's afraid that if they're at DPW or a a a town facility that. It may get ruined or destroyed, so they were looking to put a shed on this property. Again, they're gonna go, they're gonna, um, I I spoke to Stan Tabak. And they're gonna go to zoning and ask for a proper variance on that matter for hopefully December third. Just to give the council a head up, heads up.
Will that be enough time for them to have it erected in in time?
Um, it's a prefab shed, so it's it's something that, you know, just a matter of weather, so if zoning. And and Bob and Al, you can confirm this, is zoning approves this on December third. Would they be able to get a permit for this shed? And how fast would be the question? So I can have these answers for them when they ask.
If if they, uh, if they get their application in, I'll make sure it gets in on the December third. Zoning agenda.
And if it pass if it passes on December third. Would they be able to apply for a permit on December fourth is the question?
My decide, I will have the decision into fall or on the fourth and then there's. Theoretically, a twenty-day waiting period. But, uh. The 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 county, the the building office can issue the building permit. And they do it at their peril if some neighbor objects.
Yeah, there's a there's a three-week waiting period and.
Twenty days.
Well, well, it's a three-week waiting period from the director shed anyway, so as soon as they get the permit, it takes them three weeks to build it and bring it to site. So, um, and and they've reached out to all their neighbors. So there's only two neighbors that are but the property. And they don't seem to have a problem with it and they're gonna with they're gonna stay within the boundary lines anyway.
The way that property is located, I've been out there and met with them. I don't see any any reason that any, the property to the west. And to the southwest is owned by them. Uh, the property south of that is owned by them and they're east of, so that they. They circle the property. There's only only one house that he even comes close to it.
Yeah, the Paradise. That's what I call it. All right, so again, I I'm just gonna take no action on this tonight and and they're gonna go before zoning.
Update on Industrial Lane, sponsored by Councilwoman Williamson.
I just didn't want this to fall off the agenda. We had a discussion at the last meeting. I've had a conversation with Chief Barone. Um, I think you're, so there you are, yes. And and you've done some some work. I know you've talked to the the State Fire Marshal as well. There were some questions about whether whether sprinklers are needed, what size building and and all of the alike. So if you would please give us a little update as to where you are.
So we did reach out to the State Fire Marshal and the State Fire Marshal agreed with the Town of West Wallack Fire Marshal that. You know, even currently, uh, under storage or light industrial, it does not need a fire alarm or a sprinkler system. And one of the things kind of, you know, I I didn't have the answer for last week was, you know, you know, someone were to move in there. Un- unknownst to us, you know, how would that mechanism, what structural process is in place to make sure that, um. You know, uh, appropriate precautions are taken. So if a business were to move in there, they would have to apply for a business license. Uh, that business license would trigger an inspection by the Fire Prevention Bureau. And and anything that was necessary at that time would be addressed. So that that kind of answered that that one gap. Um, and again, the State Fire Marshal did agree with the assessment of the West Wallack Fire Department. That sprinklers in a fire alarm system were not necessary in a storage or light industrial building under ten thousand square feet.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief on that?
Yeah, so I guess that the follow-up question would be would be. Um, it wouldn't be the fire department's job, but what, if anything. What businesses are in there or can, what the definition of storage is or light industrial, and I don't know that. Um, I'm sure you've looked into that. I you were going to last and you were gonna have a conversation with the building inspector to the building department.
Yeah, so I did have a a conversation with Bob Asseline. He'd gone through his, um, his files on that. On, I see Bob just kind of came up. Do you have anything to add there, Bob?
Oh, yes, I do. Um, from the research. I was able to do going back probably twelve years ago when that building was built. The records that I see does show that they did have final inspections out there. But for some reason, they were not issued a C O. Final, uh, final inspections were done as a a storage building.
So that's that's forty-three that you're talking about, Bob.
Yeah, I I'm sorry.
That's fine. That's just so everyone's clear. That's forty-three and forty-three actually has three different addresses. That we found information on. I think it was one Garrett Lane, fifty-five Industrial. And forty-three Industrial are all pretty much on. Addresses that I I found in on different paperwork, all for the same building. So. What's that?
So so what is? What is the, not to make a mess out of it, but what is the correct address on this?
So forty-three is, um, forty-three Industrial Lane. So there's forty-one and forty-three.
Okay. So the other, so the other two addresses you found, are they, are they real addresses or is there anything there or?
Well, they they were AKAs, also known as. So, you know, sometimes you see on on buildings that are on corners, that are on two different streets, they'll have. Addresses on both streets. Uh, this is not that, you know, that that's I use as an as an example of why what an AKA is, but I mean, this is just one street.
Okay.
So at this point, I guess my question is, at this point. All licenses have been, so you can't speak to business licenses. You can speak to to where the fire inspections have been done.
Correct, so, um, but when a business license, when someone applies for a business license. As a condition of that, they have to have a fire department inspection. Of that business, okay? And that that would trigger it. Now, if there is someone nefarious that doesn't get a business license. Okay, um, you know, anywhere in town, you know, we we might not be aware of that and do an inspection.
Chief, and just for the record, in Bob and Chief. Um, if a. Facility is being used as. Um, a state agency facility, in other words, if there's a grow house or anything like that. We as a council and that's that's on the state, we as a council may approve the license, but we don't see. The address, the place where it's it's happening, whatever, correct? Because that's, that's on the state side.
So I I know as far as, you know, there there is some overlap between, uh, what we inspect and what the state inspects. I know that, um, childcare facilities, nursing schools and things, uh, some like private ones. The state does inspect them and the state does inspect some of the grow houses and we inspect some. I I can't really speak to the exact line.
Yeah, no, I I understand that we inspect and they inspect, but when it comes before us. Um, for instance, there's a few grow places in in the Town of West Wallack that, you know. People know about, but when it comes before us for a business license. I just get the name of the business, but they don't really share the address with that business if it's a grow facility, if I'm correct. So we really don't see the grow facility address.
That would be a question for Mary Ann, I think.
Isn't it, isn't it on the application? I mean, we have had a bunch of business licenses tonight.
Was there a grow one on there?
No, uh, you're saying grow is treated differently? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, the address would not be put on there. We did, we, when, a couple of years ago, we had one come through. And the address doesn't come on there, but the fire department has them.
Yes, it's it's the fire department, the building official and the state agency. We as a council would not see that.
That's okay, but so but we do we do whatever inspections. So I guess that's my question. Are are inspections up to date? Do we know what's in those buildings and and are we comfortable that that? Everybody's registered and done what we need to do. Are we, are we? Are we comfortable?
We're as comfortable as we can be.
I spoke with Sal.
What does that mean, Chief? I'm sorry.
Uh, well, you know, um.
I was distracted.
You know, we we've been, yes, me too.
Listen for a red light district.
Sorry.
So, um, you know, we we've been down there in the building several times this year already. Okay, um, we did ask for permission to enter the building again. Um, that request was denied.
David, if I might, if I might interrupt, nothing to do with Industrial Lane. But the discussion has been coming up about grow facilities and I assume we're talking about marijuana. All I can tell you, and I'd have to go back and look at it, that in drafting the ordinances. For marijuana, grow and the different the different types of of facilities. The confidentiality provisions are extreme. Uh, we we put into place in the building office, a very, very strict procedure. About all like it's being sealed, who can access them, so I'm not sure whether it applies, but if if we're talking. Uh, marijuana, they're extremely confidential.
And I'm not necessarily talking about grow. I don't even know. I know there was a grow facility in there. We had an issue down there. Is this still a grow facility? I don't even know that. So I guess, I guess, do we as a town know what businesses, excuse me, are in those. Facilities at this point in time? Do we have business licenses for them and? Should we be doing some sort of, I mean, does the does the tax assessor go out and look? Do we? Those are the questions that I have, that's all. Not necessarily related to growing.
Councilman Lachardi, I know you said you spoke to Sal and you got cut off, but if you wanna.
I did. I I actually, he sent me an email. I can't find the email right now, but, um, this is going back a couple of weeks ago. Um, I had asked him, you know, cuz I'm really not that familiar with the property. Um, I'm only hearing what we've heard over the last couple of years or so, but, um. Sal said there there are eleven units there and a five and a five and six, so five in one building and six in another. One being an office. Um, and there are, it's either four or five commercial businesses down there. Um, I know two were land for landscapers, one was for carpentry. And I'm not quite sure what the other one or two was. Um, and then he said the rest would be, if they're not business, there's there's personal. Personal storage as well down there. So then the question came up is, what is storage? Cuz I don't know if there's something in writing that that Bob would have, but I'm thinking storage is like. All right, you clean out your house and you put your storage down there, or you store a boat for the winter or or a car or a bike, a motorcycle. Um. I don't think, I mean, in my eyes, I mean, this is just my opinion, that's storage. It's not you're storing two or three motorcycles and you're working on them or you're working on somebody else's motorcycle and. You know, pretty soon that starts to be a business and that's not personal. So and I don't, I don't know what the rest is. My suggestion would be, um, because we've had, you know, state police bust down there, we just recently had a fire. I know Tony, our assessor, our tangible assessor, is actually gonna be going out. Maybe, I mean, not to pick on anybody, but start down there, just so we can put, again, put something else to bed. Um, I I do have some questions on safety. Um, and Chief, I don't know if you'd be able to answer these. Uh, I know in the past, I I don't know how far long ago, but and I know there was a big issue as far as. You know, it's a civil issue with land deals and all that stuff, but from, just from the town's perspective. Um. I believe that there were boulders there at one time blocking, blocking like a a cut-through pass. Um, and my my concern was, are we able to get through with the fire trucks? And I know when all the roads, I mean, you're conducting a new road or a new development, that's the first thing people say is can a fire truck turn around in there? Um, and we just had a fire. Can can, are you guys, were you guys able to do that or? Where do we stand with that?
Yeah, so I did go by there, um, last week and the boulders that were at the edge of the road, um, have been moved. Um, but there's a pile of dirt further in, maybe sixty feet in from the road that would restrict access. Access down that road, um, or down that way, that right-of-way, uh, whatever it is. On, that would would inhibit us from getting to the rear of the building. We do have access to three sides of the building. There are no exposures on that side of the building, so although we don't have access to that side. Um, i- it's not of of prime concern to the fire department. For that aspect because there isn't anything, it's not gonna extend to any buildings on that side. Um.
Okay.
Obviously, we would like to have access to it, but, um, it's it's not an immediate concern.
Okay. All right.
Cuz we we can't get around, we can go between the buildings to get to the other side, um, of that area.
So it so it doesn't put you at risk is is my concern as a councilman. It doesn't put any of our guys at risk.
Well, I mean, risk is a, you know, um, dynamic word.
I know.
So, you know.
I understand that, but I mean.
Is it possible that there's something that 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 could happen that, you know, we'd have to get on that particular side? Yes, you know, um. But if you have access to three sides of a building with, um, and you're you have access to the exposure sides, there's nothing on the other side. Um. You know, I I'm confident that, you know, we can, we can do what we need to do.
Okay.
Just Mike, and I'm sorry, my recollection. That's a right-of-way, correct? It wasn't there some, wasn't there some finding, and Tim, maybe you can help me there, that, um. That was supposed to be kept open or? Is there, is, wasn't there a court order or something?
I don't recall the status of the court order, but I believe that, um. Lane or easement or right-of-way or road, whatever they wanna call it, is open. And vehicles can get down there. The chief just verified that, so.
No, actually, Chief said you can't get all the way down. No, actually, chief said you can't get all the way down. That's not what he said.
He said you, from industrial lane, you can enter onto the property, correct, chief?
Yes, industrial lane, you go between the buildings and then take a right after the buildings to access that.
So that, that part of the court order has been complied with as far as opening up industrial lane and removing the rocks or the, the boulders between the two properties. I can't comment on the pile of dirt because I haven't seen it, and I don't know whether or not the pile of dirt was addressed in any court order.
Okay, so that, that is open. I, I haven't been down there either. Maybe we should do a field trip.
Any other questions that matter?
I, I, I just wanna clarify, um, cause I kinda talked quite a bit and didn't, didn't ask for an answer, but so the use of storage. Wha- what is, I mean, is Bob still on?
Bob is, but um, just so, you know, I don't know if this will shed a little bit of light, sorry Bob, but just, um, Siemens, when they were doing the lights for, for the town, they were storing a bunch of the lights in, in one of those buildings too. Um, we were given at what time, there's not a date on this, um, but I've got Siemens and, uh, units like three and four, I know they're not there, um, I really don't wanna name, but I, I do have a list of the, who the tenants were at one point in time. Uh, it has not been updated.
So, so what, what is, what does it mean to like store? I'm thinking Little Roadie Storage is a business that's up the road for me. And that's like, um, compared to like Storage Wars, if you watch the show Storage Wars.
Right, right.
You, you're, you're storing things, you open up, you open up the door and there you go, there's your list. You can't, there, there's no active use in it.
Right.
So is, am I?
So, this is, I think, a light industrial. Bob, do you have something to add on that?
Yes.
Out of my lane.
Yep, that, that's, that's self-storage you're talking about, Jason, which is two different things. Um, if not mistaken, I, um, they originally pulled out that permit for commercial storage. Commercial storage would be a plumber, um, a landscaper. Something, something on that idea would be storing their equipment in and taking it from there to a job. So.
Okay.
That is, that's commercial storage, which is different than like a self-storage.
Okay.
Um, and, and a, a, a storage unit, commercial storage, you have, you know, your two hour firewall, which they do, um, we know the fire walls did work, so, um, but that's what commercial storage is, which is the difference to that and self-storage.
Okay, alright, thank you for clearing that up.
Okay.
And David, uh, in the hopes of reducing our time on public comment, I do know that there are some hands up.
I, I, I can understand that, but I, I will say this, there was supposed to be something on this agenda tonight called the Phoenix Square, um, business district, which didn't get put on, and there's people in this crowd that have to be up at four in the morning to also go and we, I think we gave some answers as far as what's going on in this facility and we can, I mean, if you I mean, you wanna open up every item to public comment, we're gonna be here until one in the morning.
Well, it, it's gonna be brought up in public comment, I'm sure, but I, that's fine.
And I, and I think you addressed, and I, I know I received the text message today about the blockage of that road, and I think Chief Verone answered about the blockage of the road. He went down there and he's gonna have to rectify that issue. Um, the businesses that are in there, Councilman Lachardi said that Tony should go down there and do a um, inspection of businesses in there. Um, again, I, I can recommend that Tony go to Andrews Avenue and do inspections on that, is what type of, in, in, in all fairness to a business owner down there, you know, as Chief Verone said, we've been down there numerous times this year. At what point is the, uh, what, in solicitor, maybe you can answer this, at what point is it considered harassment from the town? I mean, if the, if the business owner, property owner give you a list of people that are in there and tell you who's in there and that's what's in there, once we do our inspection, when a private resident says I want it to be inspected, what, at what point? I mean, if I sit there and say, I want this place to be inspected, as a councilman, that would be considered harassment. If I was a private resident, shouldn't that be harassment? Just wondering here, because we talk about this every single month, we're getting the answers and then we're gonna go.
If the state or town has a valid interest regarding health, safety and welfare, regarding regulations, regarding the law, regarding all those things, they can certainly go down there and request an inspection. However, once they've gone in there and once they've inspected, unless there is new evidence to support a conclusion that something has changed, the use has changed, there's a new tenant. Um, uh, perhaps it's an unregistered business, perhaps they're doing something down there illegally uh, because of, um, you know, the use of, um, you know, the wrong environmental type of stuff. If the state's got a valid reason, sure, but the homeowner also has the right to say no. And then the state has the right to appeal, and I say state, I mean the town, and the chief can tell you that, and a building official can tell you that, uh, the district court, um, uh, will allow for appeals. I see, I think chief of the fire code, I don't know if it has to go through the state fire marshal's office first or even go directly to district court. But there are avenues, there are avenues for the state to take, if in fact that particular homeowner or business owner or property owner doesn't want the state coming in and, um, you know, continually reviewing the same things that they've been there in the past. So both parties have the right to, um, you know, address these concerns from the angle of the owner versus the angle of the state.
And again, we're down there, we, we've done inspections, rightfully so. We've all received the complaint of the road blockage from individuals and fully understand. Chief Verone has been down there, he's looking at it and, and he's addressing those issues. I, again, and we can go on all night about it, but.
I disagree with the word harassment though, Dave.
Councilman, if I send somebody to your house today and they did an inspection today and I didn't like the result and I, I come back to, uh, again and say, I think Councilman Lachardi's front yard looks like this. Or I think Councilman Lachardi's backyard looks like this. I think Councilman Lachardi's garage looks like this. At what point do you feel you're being harassed as a homeowner?
I don't have a garage.
I'm just saying, I don't, I don't.
And that's not what I'm, no, that's not what I'm saying, no. I, I understand what you're saying. All I'm saying is, if it's, it's Tony's tangible assessor have to begin looking at properties, then let's clear up this matter.
And, and Jay, I don't.
So what do we, so what do we have, so nobody's guessing. I'm not saying any, anybody's doing anything wrong at all.
Jay, I, I'm not.
These different questions, let's get the final answer. If we have, that's the question I just asked tonight about personal storage and commercial storage. I didn't know the difference. Bob cleared it up. It's not harassment.
I, I, I'm not saying you're harassing, what, what I'm saying.
We have ten or eleven units, do we have, we have four businesses, five businesses, the rest are personal? That's it. If we have, if we had a list of the commercial businesses, then that's fine. Personal? That's up to the, the landowner.
So Jay, let me ask you a question. If you're a landscaper and you're storing your trailer in your truck in the garage, but your business is out of Warwick because you're using your home address as your billing address, should they have a West Warwick business license or a Warwick business license? Because that's what's on, I could, no, I could tell you in, in one building, here's what's, I know what's down there. A state.
I don't, I don't really care what's down there, to be honest with you.
Well, obviously.
I just, I just, I just wanna clear it up, so we all have the same answer.
Jay, I totally agree, because this is just like the playground. It's gonna be brought up every single month until everybody gets the answer they want, okay? And that's fine, it's been proven. Chief Verone sits here and gives examples. It doesn't need a smoke detector. Yes, it does. Well, he goes, has to go do more research and go to the state fire marshal and get them involved. All as I'm saying is, it should be done once and for all. Every single month, it's on this agenda, it's here, it's here in public comment. So the fire marshal's done his job, the building official has done his job, let the tax assessor do their job. And, and then get, get the businesses down there. That's simple. You go to the clerk's office, say, I need
Right.
List of.
I, I think that's all, so, so let's just do it and have it in writing and be done with it.
Get it done, move it on, move on to the next problem.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, I think David, you're, you're absolutely right. But let's do it, let's memorialize it, so we don't say, oh, we talked about this, let's memorialize it, have it in writing, have it be done. Including the fact that, don't need to have sprinklers, don't need to have the alarm, whatever, whatever, Chief Verone, that way we're done.
It's, it's in the fire code, it's memorialized and, you know, that way.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, next item.
Um. Upcoming appointments, Surius Tax Board of Review, one alternate member vacancy with term to expire in twenty twenty four and one vacancy with term to expire ten twenty twenty three. Pension Committee, three vacancies with terms to expire twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Zoning Board of Review, one alternate member with term to expire seven twenty twenty five. The Tuxit River Authority, one vacancy with term to expire twenty twenty three. Board of Tenant Affairs, one vacancy with term to expire eight twenty twenty two. West Wa- West Warwick Housing Authority, one vacancy with term to expire eleven twenty twenty five. Arctic Redevelopment Commission, one vacancy with a term to expire on ten one twenty twenty five. West Warwick Public Library Trustees, one vacancy with a term to expire two twenty twenty two, one vacancy term to expire two twenty twenty one. Recreation Committee, two vacancies. Public comments, designated portion of Town Council's open meeting with citizens for citizens to address comments to the Town Council relating to matters affecting the public business. Comments may only be addressed to the Town Council, will take them under advisement. When addressing the Town Council, please state your name and address. Please conduct yourselves in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens accessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body but heard as requested. Members of the Town Council being the duly elected public body as identified in Rhode Island General Law forty two dash forty six dash two three, have no obligation to respond to the public's comments.
Um, again, I wanna go back to what I had to say earlier about the Phoenix Business District. There are, uh, people here tonight to discuss and I asked to be put on the agenda, unfortunately, it did not get put on the agenda. So I am going to let, um, Jennifer speak first and, um, I just wanna talk about the Phoenix Business District. Jen, uh, you are unmuted now and you are in the council meeting. Just take your name and address for the record. Oh, she's not unmuted.
Okay. My name's Jennifer Castaldi and I am speaking on behalf of the Phoenix businesses. My address is Nine Pleasant Street, West Warwick. So there's just a couple of concerns that we have as well as, um, problems that have been going on. Um, a couple of the matters, I'm not gonna try to take all your time tonight, um, but we are having issues with overnight parking that is causing um, problems for the businesses that are open and at four AM and, you know, um, not being enforced by the town, um, but that is an issue for the zoning, I'm sure that will be addressed in the next meeting for zoning. Um, we are having an issue on Highland Street where there's large gatherings. Um, the amount of people that are gathering, uh, causing disturbances between the businesses. Uh, very vocal to our patrons, um, telling them that they're not able to park on that side of the street. Um, the amount of liquor bottles, disturbances with the police being here all the time, as well as the rescue. It's becoming quite of a nuisance, um, as well as our customers complaining in regards to being propositioned as well as being afraid of coming to businesses. Um, the, the amount of registered sex offenders that are in one area is extremely alarming in the fact that we don't have any ordinances implemented, which we would like the legislative to address, uh, state legislatures, if we can have that paragraph put in, um, for the town of West Warwick, uh, for, uh, mile radius of, within school districts as well as churches and playgrounds. Uh, bus stops especially, we have a bus stop outside of, uh, resident that has five known registered sex offenders in one building. Um, I'm not sure what the ordinances are that for the town of West Warwick, but the last time I looked, there was not any implemented. So I would like therefore us to see if we can add a paragraph to the town of West Warwick. Um, to follow the state regulations in regards to that if possible. Um, but a couple of other issues that need to be addressed as well, um, the town, um, uh, park, um, we have been cleaning, um, animal feces, nip bottles, cigarette butts, um, a majority of it is just from you know, just the people that are hanging out in that area. Uh, so I don't know, um, what else to do other than to come to you guys to see if there is something that we can, you know, um, be addressed. Then my other concern is with the hotel being updated from a motel to a hotel to transient. Transient has a wide, wide meaning of verbiage. The, transient is very loose, um, in the word. It can mean vagrants, you know, short term, long term. Um, criminals, we already have, you know, a high rate, uh, uh, of activity here. Um, it's gonna be on the taxpayers' dollars for us to, you know, hire and have more policing in the area, um, which is not being enforced. Um, so I don't know how you guys can help us.
So Jennifer, let me, let me jump in here real quick. Um, about six to eight months ago, um, I know I met with, uh, the police department on some matters down there and they, they tried to address them and I think they did a very good job at addressing them in the beginning. Um, they continue to monitor the area, um, as much as they can, but I will say, um, the hotel itself, um, I, I wanna point out was told when it was first being developed that it was gonna be a veterans home. Because there was rumors and innuendos of a rehab center, a, um, type of, uh, how, how do I say, like crossroads or whatever, and that rumor went away because the developer said, no, I'm gonna build a veterans home. And so everybody was excited about it, everybody was looking forward to seeing this in there and it was gonna be a veterans home. Well, that was, that was nowhere near, there's not one veteran that lives there, um, that we're aware of. Um, I have asked for a list of sex offenders because that specific building has had, um, rumors of more than ten sex offenders at that building, which there's another building across the street with five. Um, I've also asked for the amount of runs, cause this individual who purchased the hotel, which made the hotel look great, I think they did a great job with the hotel, it looks clean. Um, also purchased the Arnold, Arnold Building, which is the building right next door to it. Um, with the businesses below and apartments above, um, and then also Hudson Cleaners. And possibly another building on the corner of Highland and, um.
Twenty Highland.
Yeah, it's, it's on the corner of Highland and, uh, Pleasant Street. And with that being said, there, there's some stuff coming before zoning and the transient portion, Jen, just to give you a heads up. Um, that, that went, that's no longer in the, um, ordinance, the transient, um, portion of it was removed by the council just over the last few months, um, so that's been a little bit of protection there. But, um, I know there's, that type of building is actually looking at, across the street at Hudson Cleaners. So just. So just to give everybody a heads up, we've had thirty-seven police runs in this year and over fifty fire and rescue runs at this facility, this one building in the past year. And I've personally, I hate to say this, but Jennifer and Edwina, Edwina Paliata is a witness to this, I was decorating Christmas trees in the park with Edwina in group, and I was solicited to twice from an individual from the hotel, where Edwina actually had to yell at her and tell her to get out of there. And I also had a situation last Halloween where I was a passenger in the car and I was getting, and my wife was getting harassed, they didn't see me in the car. So these are issues that, and if I'm seeing these, just going down to Cumberland Farms or whatever, I'm not down there twenty-four seven like the business owners are. And the amount of issues that are just arising down there are just ridiculous, and this developer is looking to develop all of Phoenix to be this way. And as much as I want to see development and I like to see new businesses in town, there's just a time that, you know, you gotta get a grip on it before it gets too far out of hand, and unfortunately, I think it's gonna be way out of hand before we can get a grip on it.
I appreciate that. My additional concern is, like you stated, the transient has been taken off the list. To me, you know, if it is like a crossroads facility, they do have, you know, statues are at crossroads where they have to vacate at certain hours during certain periods to allow businesses to perform, even if they are homeless, I understand that people do have places that they need to go and so forth, and they do have laws, you know, to protect them as well, but this is almost like it's running a halfway house without a licensed parole officer on, on, on the premises all the time. When is enough, gonna be enough considering the businesses in the area are already struggling to survive with COVID, they don't need to have their customers being harassed or escalated this, in regards to this. My mother's been here for thirty-four years, this establishment is a lifeline, it's been here for over eighty years. If he acquires all them other buildings and that happens just in that one particular one, I'm not trying to single them out, something needs to be done to prevent this. We need to implement certain state laws to protect us in regards to that aspect, you know, I know whether it being, you know, a PHAC loan that he's getting from, you know, them coming right out of the prison system and having temporary housing until they meet permanent housing, that needs to be looked into. But my other concern is, I don't want to come into a business and find, you know, my mom hurt, you know, that's what I'm afraid of. She's had to call the police twice in the past month to have no trespassing orders and removal of people from that facility, just because, you know, destruction of a business, and I'm sure we're not the only ones, the other businesses on the street have been, you know, coming to us in regards to this as well. Cumberland Farms has had issues, you know, a couple other businesses, I'm not gonna mention their names because they asked us, you know, to just speak on their behalf but not mention their names, just because their circumstances. So I feel that, you know, we need to nip this in the bud before it gets out of control.
So Jen, I, I will say this much too, Representative Noray, even though he's not the representative of that district, he has received calls on it only because he does frequent the businesses, and he did speak to me on it. So maybe I can get Representative Jackson, myself, and Mr. Noray down there and have some conversations, because there, some of the stuff you're saying is out of the town's hands, that needs to go probably into the state's hands. I will say, we have looked into in the past about sex offenders and whatever it may be, and I will say this, you know, they do have a right to live somewhere.
Which is understandable.
And, and, and that is understandable, but they also, anybody who's living in those facilities over there also need to follow the laws of the town and make sure that, you know, between the soliciting, the drug paraphernalia, the drugs that possibly being sold out of there or whatever, because there are some businesses that we did meet with, and like I said, I think our police department did a great job dealing with this in the beginning, and I think they'll continue to do a great job at it. I know the two offices that I spoke to that went down there, who met with all the business owners one by one, you know, and they addressed those issues, and we're gonna continue addressing those issues, and Colonel Knott is on here, and I'm sure he's taking very good notes on this. But I'll try to schedule a meeting with the three of us, with Representative Jackson and Rep. Noray and myself.
I appreciate that very much.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Sorry for the long wait and sorry you weren't put on the agenda.
No, my mother appreciates it as well. Thank you all kindly for hearing this matter, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you. All right, I have a hand up in the crowd, I don't know if it's Derek or John Reed, but just state your name and address for the record.
John Reed, sixty-two Andrews Avenue, West Warwick. First of all, I'd like to direct this to you, David, I'd like the other councilmen to pay attention. Your comment about sixty-two Andrews Avenue, and you should send somebody over, after you made that comment, I suggest you don't.
Mr. Reed, I didn't say sixty-two Andrews, I said Andrews.
Oh, you gave the street number, we've got about twelve Texas.
Mr. Reed, go back.
That's fine, whatever.
Mr. Reed, with all due respect, I did not say, Mr. Reed, with all due respect, I did not say sixty-two Andrews Avenue, because I don't even know what sixty-two Andrews Avenue is until just now, and I did say I could send somebody down Andrews Avenue and start, but at what point, and again, see what you just said. That's what I'm saying, Mr. Reed, you feel that I'm harassing you.
No, you're not harassing me.
And I don't want to harass you, Mr. Reed, so please.
That's not my issue, I just wanted to make that publicly known, and I would ask that the clerk, I'm requesting that a tape recording of this meeting be available to me whenever possible. The other thing, and I really don't want to get into this, but you decided to go that way. All right, you must have not heard the building inspector when he said that there hasn't been an occupancy permit on forty-three Industrial Lane since 2008, because there was a cease and desist, that didn't seem to bother you. The other issue, we're picking on people, I want you to come up with one single thing that we gave the council privately, and then having to do it publicly, that didn't come out to be factual. I think we're at a hundred percent. There's a list a mile long that you don't even have yet because I gave up, I gave it to other people, which will bring it out later. But if you, as the town council president, do not appreciate the fact that there's constituents out here that give you valuable information that you don't bother to do anything about, that's not my problem. You have a manager's report about forty-one Industrial that has never been cleared up yet. Okay? Again, just like the park, the playground, state violations, laws broken, the town council knows about it, does not react, but because we hit a nerve with your cousin, which I know your distance, but we did kind of get under your skin that we're harassing him. The last time they had a bus down there, okay, I was involved in that, and I'm not ashamed to say that I wasn't, okay? But I may have saved some people's lives because the state police happened to say it was a potential bomb, which our fire chief will substantiate. Okay? Then you have another fire down there, okay? Supposedly a kid working on his private vehicles, well, I'll tell you what, he must own a lot of Cadillacs that he's restoring. Because we care about the people of West Warwick, that's what we do, what we do. The other thing, nobody seems to know, maybe the clerk will give it to you, there's a court order that News Lane is a right-of-way for two hundred and eighty feet from the roadway. Okay, and four feet wide, forty, forty feet wide. As far as the boulders go, there's a stay on the boulders, so I can't get in my lot, which I don't care at this point in time, but the fire department has a right to go down two hundred and eighty feet, is blocked again. So if something happens, you didn't do nothing about it. And that's all I got to say tonight, but Andrews Avenue, send them all over here, David.
Mr. Reed, I don't want to go down that road, but listen to me, I'm gonna say this and say this once and for all. The town itself needs to get all the answers for the council and put this to bed, just like the playground, because to be honest with you, Mr. Reed, I really like you, but I am sick and tired of having to deal with the same stuff month after month after month and get no, and then only for, we get the answers and then we're gonna have, then we need to get more answers, then we get the answers on that, then we need more answers. Let's put it to bed once and for all. If, if, if the rocks need to be removed, the chief needs to, if we need to tell them to move the rocks, tell them to move the rocks, I don't care, the rocks need to go, get them out of the way.
I don't care about the rocks.
What I'm saying.
Don't care about the rocks.
But, Mr. Reed, what I'm saying.
Your own statement, you answered your own statement, okay? This has been going on for two and a half years, probably because you can thank the town solicitor to tell me to go dig in the dirt. I've been digging so much, I had to go get a giant excavator for this town, okay? But if you people solve some of the problems that were given to you, we wouldn't revisit it over and over and over. And then what happened is, this is like an onion, a giant onion, you find one thing, and next thing it leads you to another, and another, and another. It is absurdity what goes on around here. But you know what, you answered your own question, it goes on and on and on. Maybe put a stop to it, do something about it, David. If the people don't work right, fire them, get some competency around you. Because I know if I didn't have some competency around me, I'd be broke, that's why this town's in the shape it's in. I'm done for tonight, have a good night, people.
How about a motion to adjourn?
Any other public comment? I don't see.
Jay Messier, I stole your thunder, sorry.
I'm not even sure if he's here.
I don't think he is.
I know Justin had to be excused, he did send me a text message.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, good night.
Ten thirty-seven, good night.